Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners, a regular meeting on Tuesday, November the 28th. We'd like to start this morning with an invocation by Justin Peters. If you will come forward and followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Wilkinson, please rise if you can.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we commit this meeting to you. We invite you to come and reveal your will in every aspect of our county, and as county affairs are discussed, we ask for your will to be done. As First Thessalonians 2:1 and 2 says, "Pray for those in authority," I urge then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceable and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. We are praying for our commissioners this morning. Show our commissioners your purposes. Enlighten them that they may know how you want them to accomplish their tasks. As citizens of our county, we desire your glory and blessing and all that is done. Direct all thoughts, words, directions, and actions toward the right path and help all to stay on track. Let your will be done as plans and decisions are made. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please show me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Peters, and thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson. The chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes with a slight modification. The invocation was not led by Sandrine Gilyard.
There's also a couple of other changes on page six, under Radiology Technology Week. Motion made by Commissioner Harvey, seconded by Harvey. I believe that motion was made by Commissioner Pickens and seconded by Harvey. And then on page 12, Mr. Jones was referred as Mrs. Jones in the third and fourth sentences. So we need to make those changes.
Okay, did you get those, Laura? Or did you get them, Ashley? Thank you. Okay, so was that a motion to approve with the changes?
Yes, sir. With the changes presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next portion of our meeting, I'm going to start this, and Bobby, would you come up and join us at the dais up here and sit in Matt's chair for now, please, sir? Bobby, while we are excited to have your steadfast leadership in the upcoming legislative session, we want to take this opportunity to express our gratitude for all you've done as your time during Putnam County's legislature before the business of your last legislative session begins. Representative Payne, you've been an invaluable force in helping secure much-needed funding for Putnam County for many things, among them being drainage projects, roadway improvements, Putnam safety, or public safety funding, animal control, and so much more that you've helped us with. Your vision and leadership established what is now one of the busiest times in the state capital, and also for us and some of the valuable days that we spend in Tallahassee. We look forward to rural days every year and what a success that has become under You made a reality for small counties like Putnam to have their own dedicated time in Tallahassee. I'm confident that this will be one of many initiatives to your credit, which will yield positive long-time returns after your tenure in the House is ended. We will enjoy the success from having these very special rural days where small counties can be heard for years to come. While we are sad to see your days as a legislator coming to an end, we will forever be grateful for the time you spent in Tallahassee representing us and your hometown of Putnam County. Thank you, Bobby. I'm going to, at this time, ask President Joe Pickens to come forward and make some
Well, good morning, Representative, members of the commission. Terry, thank you for the opportunity for this. I will advise the crowd that you were wise enough to not give me advance notice that I would be speaking, and therefore this will be more brief than if you had given me advance notice. But the opportunity to do this is one that I will cherish. I will also be mindful of what you told us a few minutes ago, which was that once the cameras start rolling, we're required to be nice to Representative Payne. And this is, well, let me just say this, Bobby. I can say with a high degree of confidence that I'm the only person in this room that knows exactly how you feel, because 16 years ago, I was not in that chair, but I was in your spot, and I knew my last legislative session was coming, and I, at that time, about all you can do is plan for the last one and hope that the previous seven that you can't get back were everything that you wanted for your home, your county, your district. Like me, you were born and raised here, grew up here, graduated from high school in Putnam County. I know that for you, although you represent all of your district, that this will always be home. I said at the delegation meeting, as I thanked you for your service, and I'm going to say it again, and then just a couple other things, and I'll be done. People don't realize how much this job takes you away from home. Whatever it is you call home, you're not there. It is your job to take care of everybody else for eight years. You were elected to do so, and people counted on you to do so, and, sir, you have. You know it was my great disappointment as I recruited you hard in 2007 and 2008 that you succeed me. It was Seminole Electric's wise choice, I think, at the time, that they weren't willing to give you up for the time commitment that you knew and they knew it would, you would take in 2008. It was our county's fortune. It was all of our great fortune that Bobby stuck it out and in 2015-16 decided to run when he finally could. Patience is a virtue, it's just not one of mine, but we are incredibly lucky, sir, that you were patient and that you ran for us. I also said that no one wants more when you leave this job than to hope that the person that succeeds you doesn't screw it up. Well, you have exceeded anything that I ever thought about accomplishing, and that's the greatest thing that I could say about our representative, is that you, sir, you are indeed the best representative that we've ever had, and I feel relatively confident in my ability to judge that. So I'm going to close with something, Terry, that I did write down, and I didn't know that I would ever use again, and I wrote it down on October the 26th, 2017, and I saved it, not knowing that one day I might need it. And Bobby, this is what I wrote, and this is how I feel about you and your service to the home that we love. Substance. Substance isn't flashy, or glitzy, or loud. Substance is deep, and calm, and enduring, and reliable, and thoughtful, and confident, and substance is desperately needed in this United States of America and this state of Florida that we all love. I want to thank you on behalf of myself and my family, and hopefully most of the people in this audience, that we can all competently say, if nothing else, that you serve us, this county and your district and the state of Florida with the highest degree of substance that we could have ever, ever hoped for. Representative Payne, thank you for your service.
I'm going to do this back here instead of up there. Bobby, if you would join me up here, please, sir, and all the other commissioners. Okay, we've got a few others that want to say a word or two here, and so before we allow you the last remarks, Bobby, we're going to start with Commissioner Wilkinson.
Well, I know you don't like all this hoopla, because you're not that type of person, but I think about the time that I worked for you for six years, and I remember going, and I don't have anything prepared, obviously, which that's probably the best thing, but anyway, I remember when you told me you were running for office, and I thought, okay, let's, I'll support you. And then you started running, and we were at the parades and handing out candy, and I'm walking along the cars and the trucks, and we're all over four counties and doing the campaign trail, and what impressed me the most about you is when I heard you debate and how you were sincere in your level of integrity. And as I had the opportunity to work for you, which I certainly never planned, your sister called me one day and said, "We need somebody in that office that knows something about Putnam County." And I said, "Well, I would consider that." And she said, "Really?" And so I said, "Yeah," and you and I spoke, and it was only a $28,000 a year job, and when I went to my broker, my real estate broker, and said, "Hey, I'm thinking about working for Representative Payne," he said, "Why in the world would you do that? You're going to go from a much bigger-paying job to a $29,000, $28,000 a year job." And my response was, because I know Representative Payne is going to make a difference in Putnam County, and I want to be part of that. And I can tell you, in the six years of working for you, it was my honor and privilege. I certainly remember a lot of funny stories that graced our doors, but the most important thing that you taught me was your level of integrity. And integrity, to me, is doing the right thing when nobody else is, when it's, oh, I screwed that up, doing the right thing when no one is looking, and you certainly did that. Anytime there was a question, it was always doing the right thing for your constituents and doing the right thing for all of the four counties that you represented. And so thank you for your integrity, thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to your future. So thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Representative Payne, I know you don't like me calling you that. We go back a long way, and you said it's Bobby, but out of respect, I call you that. Commissioner Wilkinson said integrity and respect, and I want to give a few examples of how that works in Tallahassee. Tallahassee is crazy sometimes, and if you've never been up there lobbying, you would understand what I said crazy. It's organized chaos, and there was a couple times that we've had some situations, one out in Barden, that we needed a bridge, and we were able to move monies over, and one on 310 recently, where we were able to get money. And I want to tell the latter story, if you don't mind. I'm sitting in Senator Simpson's office at the time with a few of us from rural counties, and he was going around the room asking what we needed, and I said, "Well, we need a couple million dollars for the repair of the 310 bridge." And the first thing he said to me was, "How does Representative Payne feel about that?" He wanted to know that. That's the integrity. I could not walk the halls of Tallahassee without representatives and senators saying, "How does Bobby feel? How does Representative Payne feel about that?" And it was easy, it was an easy lift, to say, "He's behind anything we need in Putnam County." And I often make the comment about planes landing in our position, because we always take off, and it's hard to get them to land sometimes, and you're going to hear some of that a little bit later, that we're trying to land more planes. But with Representative Payne in Tallahassee representing us, it was a little bit, a lot easier to get these planes landed. State Road 20 was 50 years in the making, and it finally came in for a landing, and what a beautiful road to move people from basically Palack, if you will, all the way to Gainesville now, and it's a wonderful commute. So there's a lot of good things that Representative Payne has done that probably we don't even know, but I can tell you, I'm with Commissioner Wilkinson and the rest of our group, knowing that you're up there, sir, it's just been a blessing for me to go up there and ask and, you know, basically work the system and know that Bobby Payne is right there with you with the best thing that we can do for Putnam County. And I can tell you, that's our job. Our job is to advocate for Putnam County and to help Putnam County be better than it was. One day, we're all going to leave these jobs, and we're going to say we left it better than we found it. Representative Payne, you left us better than we found it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Adams, did you have a comment?
Yeah, absolutely. So Bobby, you and I met for the first time at a forum that you were doing, and you actually took the time. I was very new to the county, and I was running for school board. You took the time, you came back to the back table where I was sitting next to you. It was your forum, I was just attending it, and one thing you told me that stood out is consistency, is to be consistent. I don't know if you remember this, but be consistent in your message, be consistent in what you deliver as an elected official or as a candidate. And I will say this, you and I have had our differences on some topics here and there as far as different votes and different things. You have been steadfast and consistent in everything that you have voted for or done. You've made good statements about why you did it, and I totally appreciate the consistency that you brought, and even the one time when you came before our commission, and you took arrows for us. And I really do appreciate that, that is, that consistency is, I think, as much as integrity is important, being consistent shows that integrity. It's an outward display of it, and I appreciate that very much.
Commissioner Pickens.
Thank you, Chairman. Representative Payne, Bobby, Senator, and only a few of us in the room know the significance of that. I knew that my brother wanted you to succeed him, and the timing was not right, as he just spoke and alluded to. But when the timing was right, you stepped up to the plate, and I was wondering, as I watched my brother go through what he went through, being away from home, the pressure, making decisions, trying to do the right thing for his county and his district, if you knew what you were getting yourself into. But you did, and you've done a fabulous job. For Joe to stand there and say, after the three state representatives that we've had over the last 30 years or so from Putnam County that's done a fabulous job, to give you that recognition, that is special. In closing, I just want to say, Bobby, as a commissioner, as a citizen of Putnam County, and as a friend, thank you for everything that you sacrificed and did for your district in Putnam County. Thank you.
As part of the program this morning, the firemen are going to give you a little presentation. I guess I should have said firemen and fire ladies.
Representative Payne, I don't know what to say, but thank you. In this season of gratitude, we are very grateful, and thank you for your leadership that you supplied for us in Putnam County. It's the things that you did that made Putnam County Fire Rescue move forward with the funding for a fire station in East Palacka, the recent funding of a fire station in the west end of Putnam County, and beyond all that, the safety equipment that you sent us last year made a tremendous difference in our service. It was much needed, and I can't speak like the folks in front of me. They've said it, you've done a wonderful job, and on behalf of Putnam County Fire Rescue, we'd like to say thank you. On the bottom of the plaque, it says, "Representative Bobby Payne, in recognition of his eight years of dedicated service representing District 20 in the Florida House of Representatives from 2016 to 2024, Putnam County Fire Rescue appreciates the many ways that you have represented the citizens of Putnam County, as well as being instrumental in the forward-moving progress of Putnam County Fire Rescue." We'd like to present that to you, sir, and also we have a set of challenge coins of every major incident that has happened inside of Putnam County to go on the board that the commission gave to you this morning, starting with Hurricane Irma and ending with Hurricane Matthew and Ian, or, sorry, Hurricane Nicole and Ian, so that's all included in today's packet, but thank you so much for your dedicated service to Putnam County Fire Rescue.
Sir, permission to speak from here, Chair? Well, certainly, I'm honored and humbled by everyone's presentation and appearance today and what you've said to me this morning. It goes without saying that there's a lot of people to thank. Thank the good Lord above for giving us the opportunity, but within the community, I have to thank people that encouraged me, which are all of you, but two or three people early on. As President Pickens said, we, the opportunity arose a second time to run. And so thank you, Joe, for that, as well as former legislator Kelly Smith and John Browning for always kind of prodding me to run. I would say that there's so many people to thank, my family, certainly Margie and Chance and his wife Sarah and the grandkids, and my siblings, my brother, and probably the one that had the most difficult job was my sister-in-law. She was my financial director for campaigns, and it was always a busy job for her. But additionally, staff, I've been very blessed to have staff, starting with Sam Wagner early on as my legislative aide, and then a guy named Wesley Larkin, who's now a successful attorney in Georgia. Sarah Lynn Arndt was my LA when I was Ways and Means Chair. She's now the vice president of a Chamber of Commerce in Arkansas. And then now I have Aubrey Fay. But along with that, Tammy Steele's been steadfast with me from day one. Shondell is now with us as our district aide in Leota. You provided so much for me in six years, and I think it's apparent that your knowledge and your skill level has put you where you should be in a county commissioner's seat. So thank you for all that you've done. Additionally, again, there's so many people to thank, so many people that supported. I saw Eddie in the back this morning, and he was one of the first people So Rural County Days, if you're not familiar with that, was an opportunity for people to come to Putnam, from, from Putnam County, in my district at the time, which is Bradford Union and portions of Clay, to Tallahassee in large groups. And what gets attention when you're in Tallahassee is people in large groups that serve food. So we serve food, thankful to the Crescent City Rotary Club for coming up and cooking fish, and certainly that caught everyone's attention that day. That, that event has now grown, and the reception last year, probably close to 400 people and maybe 2,000 people in the, in the courtyard, in the Capitol. And so I think of the, of the rural counties that are often overlooked, I think it's made a significant difference. The governor passed an executive order last year to recognize more needs for rural counties. I, I don't know that it was largely contributed to that, but at least it was the opportunity to recognize what rural counties offer in the state of Florida. As well, I've been extremely blessed to have house members that I would say I'm best friends with. Been very fortunate to have served on two leadership teams under two speakers, and that gives us a seat at the table, Putnam County and the district, a seat at the table. But Speaker Renner is, is probably one of my dearest friends, as well as Tom Leek. Tom Leek is the Appropriations Chair, and Chuck Clemmons from Gainesville, we, we house together. I say, at times, I say we were roommates, and my, one of my good friends, Tom Leek, will say, no, 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 we're not roommates, we just live in the house together. So, but they've been very, very strong members of our, our colleagues in Tallahassee. Our delegation's been strong with former member Travis Cummings and Rob Bradley and Jennifer Bradley and Sam Garrison. So we have a strong, a strong, a strong group in Tallahassee. And again, you don't do it by yourself, you build it, you build that team and that opportunity through trust and respect and relationships and collegiality. And that carries you a long way in Tallahassee, to build that respect, as Larry was speaking of, knowing that you're working with others to accomplish a goal. And the goal, after all, for me, being from Putnam County, was to leave this place, leave the quality of life better than what I found it. And hopefully, hopefully that's happened. So I appreciate what you've done today to at least recognize me, and I'm not sure that I'm worthy of it, but I appreciate you doing that. And it feels like Christmas morning with all the nice gifts I receive back here. So commissioners, thank you so much, continued success. I'm looking forward to another great year and representing Putnam County. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. I know that you need to leave the meeting and get to Tallahassee, so I'm going to call a three-minute recess, and hopefully we can get you out the door that quick. Thank you for taking your time this morning to do this with us.
Thank you.
Okay. I know that you need to leave the meeting and get to Tallahassee, so I'm going to call a three-minute recess, and hopefully we can get you out the door that quick. Thank you for taking your time this morning to do this with us.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move. Okay. We're going to proceed with the next part of the agenda this morning, which is the election of the new chair and vice chairman. Mr. Suggs, if you'll give us your little speech, please, sir.
My little speech? Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. It's that time of year again, and it's my pleasure and honor to go through the process of assisting you folks in nomination of a new chair and vice chair. But before we do that, we've got a little housekeeping that we have to take care of every year. And that is actually to, one of my favorite things is to talk about the outgoing chair for just a minute. And, you know, this is one of those times that's just absolutely, you know, an easy thing for me to do. Chairman Turner, you and I came on the board about the same, or came to Putnam County about the same time, you as a commissioner, me as the appointed official, as the county administrator. We talk a lot about what we've seen change in the last six years, and a lot of that is due to the leadership of you, sir. And it's been my pleasure to work with you for those six years. So, you know, as we always do, we give the outgoing chair the plaque that commemorates your time as chair, and that plaque says, presented to Terry Turner, in appreciation of effective and dedicated leadership as chairman from 2022 to 2023. But, you know, in thinking back about all the things that you and I have seen in six years and the things that we've done and the things that we've talked about, I just didn't think that was enough. So last week, Commissioner Harvey and I spent three days down in Tampa, at the Association Counties Legislative Conference. And this is Commissioner Harvey's fault, sir, I want you to know that. He drug me over and made me listen to a presentation from a young lady about AI, artificial intelligence. You know, and I was struggling to find the words today to say the things I needed to say that represented you, Chairman Turner, in the way that would be bestowed upon you in the way it should be. So I asked AI for a little help here this morning. And this is what AI has to say about Chairman Turner.
Uh-oh.
In the halls of leadership, a figure stands, Chairman Turner, with capable hands. Guiding with wisdom through challenges faced, a steady presence with vision embraced. In boardrooms and meetings, decisions unfold. Turner's resolved, a story be told. Leading with purpose, a beacon so bright, illuminating the path through day and night. With diligence and grace, a leader esteemed, Chairman Turner's visions like a dream. In the tapestry of progress, as threads are spun, a legacy of leadership forever be sung. That was AI's representation, not mine, sir. So all I ask for you to do this morning is please don't pass the gavel, so you can't make a motion to terminate my employment here today. But in all seriousness, you know, every once in a while, we have to have a little humor in our jobs. We go through a lot. You and I have been through tremendous things, we've been through hurricanes, you and I sat through COVID, when we had to do meetings by Zoom. And in all seriousness, sir, steadfast leadership is what has taken to get us to where we are. So thank you very much for all that you have done for Putnam County, for the citizens of Putnam County, and for me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely.
Now, as we get going here this morning, it is my honor, my privilege to do the nominations for the chair and the vice chair. I'll read a script, and then I'll ask for nominations. The moderator, myself, will open up the floor for nominations. Nominations do not require a second. If only one name is placed in nomination, the moderator will ask for a motion to close nominations, to elect a nominee by acclamation, and a second to the motion and a vote to follow. If more than one name is placed in nomination, the moderator will ask for a motion to close nominations, a second to the motion and a vote will follow. I ask the moderator will then ask for a show of hands in support of the nominees in the order for which they were nominated. The moderator will acknowledge the newly elected chairman, and the same procedure will follow for the election of the vice chair. So is there any nominations?
Mr. Moderator, I nominate Commissioner Harvey to be the next chairman.
Is there any other nominations?
I move nominations cease.
Okay.
I was going to nominate someone. I'd nominate Leona Wilkinson.
All right, so we have two nominations. Is there any further nominations? Then we'll ask for a motion to close nominations?
So move, move.
Okay. And the moderator will ask for a show of hands for those in favor of Commissioner Larry Harvey as the next chairman. All right? And nominations for those, and votes for those for Commissioner Wilkinson. Let the record reflect that the vote was four to one for newly elected Chair Larry Harvey. Congratulations, sir.
Mr. Moderator, before we change seats, I would also like to nominate Commissioner Wilkinson as vice chairman.
Do we have any other nominations?
Make the motion, nomination cease.
Nomination cease. All in favor of Commissioner Wilkinson as vice chair?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Vice Chair Leona Wilkinson. We're going to take a two-minute recess to move everything around. We'll be right back. All right, we're going to reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting. And before we go down to our Port Authority, I do want to say, take a point of privilege and thank our chairman, Commissioner Terry Turner. Commissioner Turner, really, I know today seems like a day that we're sending accolades out to people, but Commissioner Turner has been steadfast on this board to represent Putnam County and to move Putnam County forward from the day you walked in this door. We've been able to lower taxes, which is the millage rate, and even this year took a big bite, which I was convinced that our chairman knew the proper process and the, and the way to go. I wasn't so sure to take that big bite, but you did. And I honored our chairman, and I tell you, it's not going to notice. This county's moving forward. And I want to give a little brief story about, years ago, we had a two o'clock meeting taking place next door, and it was raining throughout the whole state of Florida, it was just pouring down rain. And I had to be in Sarasota that night for a meeting. And Commissioner Turner and I both went to different ends of the room, and we were steadfast in supporting our communities to the point where we were pretty, pretty headbutting there, if you will, and standing our ground. Meeting got over, we agreed to disagree, and he said, let me hug you before you leave, because we're not going to leave like that. And that's the kind of representative government that you have. We might not always agree up here, but we're always going to get along, and we're going to move this county forward. And that's what I admire the most about Commissioner Turner, is regardless whether he's, whether, where he stands and the deliverance of his, his message, he's moving Putnam County forward. So Commissioner Turner, thank you for all your leadership in the past year and since you've been here. Thank you. All right, good. Okay, let's move right along. So we have a nine of, we're going to recess our Board of County Commission meeting, and we're going to start up the Port Authority meeting. And right now, do we have any public comment on Port Authority items only? Port Authority items only? Seeing now we're, you have a Port Authority item? Okay, come forward. And if you will state your name and address for the record, and we will keep that time for you. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Chris Stapleton, and my company is called Gypsum to Gypsum. And I think this is the right time. I, I talked yesterday and was told this would be the time. So I, my company occupies the piece of property right adjacent to the port property. We have a 20-year lease on that piece of property. And as fate had it, has it, we are a very water-oriented type of a business. Briefly, my company, Gypsum to Gypsum, is a drywall sheet rock recycling company. And we were invited here to Florida because of the good work that we did for CertainTeed, which is St. Gobbins up on Route 17. They have a large plant in Seattle, Washington. And they had asked us to provide services so that they could recycle their scrap wallboard. And after five years, which were almost at the end of our first contract, they talked about their infrastructure build out here in, in Palaca, and invited us with a contract to come down here and do exactly what we did for them here. And so sometime around the first of last year, we came down, struck a deal with the new owners of that piece of property, invested some two-plus million dollars in infrastructure and equipment, and kind of snuck into town. But we, we now move almost 400 tons per day of material in and out, right adjacent to your property, and have done that. And would like to expand to efficiently move material from Jacksonville, because we also have a contract with the USG Corporation in Jacksonville. And in our business, when you're moving heavy loads and stuff like that, the efficiency of going from a truck either to rail or, or to barge really greatly creates efficiencies. So luckily, I moved next to a growing port. Larry, you guys, you've been there and seen what we've done, and Terry's also been out to visit us. And so I'm basically looking for continued support. Our piece of property molds very well with the port plans, which I've read with your vision. We, we would like to see how we could expand both properties to be a water-oriented use for both. When you're moving large barge material, and I will add that we do, we had moved large quantities of barge material. We're located on the Willamette, I mean, I'm sorry, on the Puget Sound up in Seattle. So moving stuff by barge is something that, that I'm familiar with doing. And, and so when I came down here to, to take a look at this, you know, those efficiencies certainly shine, and we'd like to take the rest of our property.
the right time. I talked yesterday and was told this would be the time. So I, my company occupies the piece of property right adjacent to the port property. We have a 20-year lease on that piece of property, and as fate had it, has it, we are a very water-oriented type of a business. Briefly, my company, Gypsum to Gypsum, is a drywall sheet rock recycling company, and we were invited here to Florida because of the good work that we did for Certain Teed, which is St. Gobbins up on Route 17. They have a large plant in Seattle, Washington, and they had asked us to provide services so that they could recycle their scrap wallboard. And after five years, which were almost at the end of our first contract, they talked about their infrastructure build out here in Placa, and invited us with a contract to come down here and do exactly what we did for them here. And so sometime around the first of last year, we came down, struck a deal with the new owners of that piece of property, invested some two-plus million dollars in infrastructure and equipment, and kinda snuck into town, but we now move almost 400 tons per day of material in and out, right adjacent to your property, and have done that, and would like to expand to efficiently move material from Jacksonville, because we also have a contract with the USG Corporation in Jacksonville. And in our business, when you're moving heavy loads and stuff like that, the efficiency of going from a truck either to rail or to barge really greatly creates efficiencies. So luckily, I move next to a growing port. Larry, you guys, you've been there and seen what we've done, and Terry's also been out to visit us. And so I'm basically looking for continued support. Our piece of property molds very well with the port plans, which I've read with your vision. We would like to see how we could expand both properties to be a water-oriented use for both. When you're moving large barge material, and I will add that we do, we had moved large quantities of barge material. We're located on the, I mean, I'm sorry, on the Puget Sound up in Seattle, so moving stuff by barge is something that I'm familiar with doing. And so when I came down here to take a look at this, you know, those efficiencies certainly shine, and we'd like to take the rest of our property and see how we can work together to create efficiencies between the port property and ours, but to support the whole idea of moving material by water. I will have you know that we have talked to several captains and looked at equipment, and although that channel out there does need to be dredged and it does need to be maintained as a navigable waterway, there is sufficient depth out there now to move a couple thousand-ton barge. Our projection, Certain Teed has a need to move now as they wean themselves off of the seminal electric synthetic gypsum into rock, which is gonna come in via ship up in Jacksonville. All that 700-plus thousand tons needs to be moved down here to this plant, and they just can't take all the truck traffic. I mean, so the good news is that it's a big expansion. The bad news is it can't all be by truck, and rail is also a little bit of a problem. So we kinda all fall into the same thing. They have also asked us, and I see you do mention Certain Teed, that's a third paragraph down in your port plan. That infrastructure and working together is something that, why we came to town to do. We're going to be occupying and developing the barge facility in Jacksonville for them. And so tying the two together, having a local company have not only a facility here to support what you guys are doing, and a Jacksonville connection that's on the water up there with deep water, I think is gonna mean some good things in the future. And I'll close by saying, you know, private business moves a little faster than some governmental things, and we have some immediate needs. Your property and our property are tied together, utilities and drainage, and I've asked to have some assistance in seeing how we can get those things to work. And there's also a great big piece of apparatus that's out in front of ours that's standing in the way of some drainage and pavement work that I want to do. So I'm gonna leave with a, I'll give Mr. Sullivan a proposal to what I would like to see done with that thing, and hopefully that someone can get together and we can work on that so that I can continue to do the good work and make some money here in Putnam County, and I'm happy to be here, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it, okay?
Okay.
Is there any more public comments on Port Authority items? We're gonna close our public comments on Port Authority items and move into Item B, Administrative Port Infrastructure Development Grant, page 23 on your agenda. Sam, thank you. You look mighty sharp today, sir.
Just ameliting you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners and Port Authority members. I'm coming before you to present the grant agreement between us and the Maritime Administration of the U.S. Department of Transportation. This is a grant that will allow us to fund a port development plan, or actually enhance the one we already have in the books, including infrastructure and facility assessments, site planning, preliminary engineering for expansion and construction of the necessary infrastructure that we need to develop to be a fully functional port, market analysis, which is already ongoing, so we'd be enhancing that, a traffic study, which would be maritime as well as road and rail, preliminary real estate and environmental assessments, some of which have already been conducted, especially over the old GP property, which we call the annex, and a development of a comprehensive capital improvement plan that will identify potential funding sources and project priorities. Funding sources are gonna be essential in helping us develop the plan forward. This grant, we applied back in May of 2022. As Mr. Chris was just mentioning, government works slower, and issues in Congress kinda delayed things. We have the paperwork, it's been presented to us, it's ready for execution. Once upon execution, back up in DC, we will be able to put our RFQ out there and get a contractor and get this project moving forward that we've been trying to do for a couple of years now.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
And I'll entertain any questions.
Is there any questions from the Commissioners?
Just a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Just a comment, if I may. On page 42 of the packet, it's showing that the Chairman of the Board is still myself, so it probably needs to be changed to Commissioner Harvey for him to sign that when it passes today.
Yes, sir. I will get with DC, I'm sure. That's just a technicality that won't take six weeks to resolve.
Let's hope not. Mr. Adams, that.
So the match that we have to provide, where is that coming from? Future projects? Is that Port Authority, or is that?
It's coming from the Port Authority.
Port Authority, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Okay, we have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A proper second. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you, Sam. Thank you. Is there any other general discussion on Port Authority items?
Yes.
Mr. Adams, that, you have the floor, sir.
So I appreciate the gentleman from, I can't remember the company that you represent, but coming forward, and I've been talking for, since the day I got elected that the port could be utilized today. It absolutely can for that size vessel. So I'm hopeful that something works out, that we can use it and start using it and generating some income for the Port Authority sooner than later, and some sort of partnership with you or others that may need that, to bring stuff in from Jacksonville on smaller-type barges. So glad to hear that someone actually came up and talked about the possible potential uses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. That, is there any other comments? Okay, we're gonna close our general discussion of Port Authority and reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting and go right into 6D. But before we do, I'd like to recognize Denise Vogelstein. She's in the audience today. Stand up, please. And she's our Florida Association of Counties Trust Marketing Rep, so our insurance person, and she's here to judge how I do today. So we'll, you know, I'll hear about it at the next board meeting in Tallahassee, I'm sure. So, no. Thank you for being in the audience today, Denise, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do for our Association of Counties Trust. Okay, number 6D, our proclamation for Pearl Harbor Remembrance. Commissioner Pickens, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Harvey. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2023-146, honoring the legacy of Pearl Harbor. Whereas on the solemn day of remembrance, we pause to reflect on events that unfolded on December 7, 1941, a day that forever changed the course of history. And whereas today, we honor the memory of the brave men and women who endured the surprise attack on Pearl Harbor, a day that will forever be etched in our collective consciousness. As of those who lost their lives in the service of our country, we also pay tribute to the resilience and courage displayed by the survivors, serving on a poignant reminder of the human spirit's capacity to endure, rebuild, and emerge stronger in the face of adversity. And whereas, let us take a moment to express our gratitude to the veterans who served during World War II, many whom are no longer with us, whose sacrifice and dedication paved the way for the freedom we cherish today. And whereas, we also extend our heartfelt appreciation to the families and loved ones who supported these heroes bearing the weight of uncertainty and loss. And whereas we reflect on the legacy of Pearl Harbor, may we commit ourselves to preserving the lessons of history, striving for a world with dialogue triumphs over discord, understanding prevails over conflicts, and where the sacrifices of the past inspire us to build a future marked by unity and peace. Now therefore be it proclaimed, that on this day of remembrance, we honor the resilience of the human spirit, the sacrifices of the following, and the unwavering commitment to freedom that emerged from the ashes of Pearl Harbor. Done, ordered, adopted this 28th day of November 2023. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
We have a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, next is our Item E, Lori Parker with Human Resources. It's a long walk down there, isn't it?
It's worth it.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Where this presentation is to recognize employees for their exemplary service to the county and the citizens of Putnam County, and they will be awarded Employee of the Month or Employee of the Quarter. The first award goes to Tony Paprowski-Ford, Employee of the Month for October 2023.
He's on the other side of.
Hi.
Yay.
Mr. Chairman, that's the exact reason why you don't wanna be on the wrong side of Ms. Parker. But thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I'd like to thank Tony for his services, because he gets one that's kind of enduring, because, you know, in a moment's notice in those MSBU roads in the West Putnam area, a rain event or three days without rain can make a humongous difference, and the citizens expect the service. And I think he's done a fabulous job with the communication that it takes with our citizens. I think he's got more activity on the citizens' board than we've had in quite some time. I think that through his leadership, they've made great progress and strides into that. Tony's always learning, he's always there. I mean, usually, through public works sometime around 7:00, 7:15, and Tony's always there at his desk getting his stuff lined out, and I think he works very well with our local contractors, making sure the work's getting done. I think we've saved some money along some of our MSBUs, and we look like we're gonna save some money hopefully moving forward in the future. So I think Tony does a remarkable job at what he does with coordinating our MSBUs, and I would just like to say thank you to Tony for all of his hard works and efforts. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree.
This award is a certificate for his service and a check from the Board of County Commissioners.
Good deal.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Adams, that, you had a comment?
Drink's on you tonight, Tony.
So I just wanted to personally thank Tony. You've been in some interesting, I guess I'll say, meetings with citizens that have always come out, you know, your honesty, integrity when you're standing there in front of them and telling them the truths of what we can and cannot do, and what we can do and different, being creative with ways that we can try to help them, has been fantastic. So I just want to say, I truly appreciate you, and unfortunately, one of my MSBUs has almost no participation, and the smallest one I have has almost full participation. So it's a blessing and a curse at the same time, but you're handling both of them fantastically, so thank you.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to say thank you for this recognition, and the only way that I could be recognized for it is the support staff given, I mean, just public works in general. Anyone, if you have a question, if I have a question, and I've had many since I've started here, whether it's at public works, whether it's at procurement, whether it's county administrators, county commissioners, it's, you can't do that, you cannot be recognized for something like this without the support staff that I have. And it's all in networking, and we all try to make it better and just try to improve the county.
That's right.
Thank you very much for the recognition.
Come up. The next award goes to the Employee of the Month, who's being recognized for Employee of the Month for November 2023, and it is Alan Buco from Veterans. He's the Senior Veteran Service Officer.
Good deal.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Again, honored to take this opportunity to recognize Alan, who does so much work. As you know, veterans are near and dear to my heart, but we are also are blessed in Putnam County with a very large populations of veterans.
Yes.
Alan's office gets over 300 calls a month. That's every single month. They're routinely talking to that many veterans, and Alan and Trevor and Jeremy do a fantastic job of serving our citizens under Alan's leadership. Alan's the first to jump in and train, he's the first to encourage Jeremy and our new officer, Trevor, and he's just done a fantastic job with that office. He's also gonna be celebrating his two-year anniversary in a couple of days with us, so we're very excited to recognize him today and just honor him. Thank you.
Good deal. Good deal.
Yeah, well. We can't follow Tony.
Right.
Mr. Adams, that has a comment he'd like to.
Yeah, this is another one that I've worked with a bunch, and just recently you sent me an outline, a spreadsheet of the interactions that you're having per month with our veterans in our community, and it's in the thousands per month. They're not just servicing 10 or 12 people, they're interacting with thousands of people every year, and just doing a great job. There was a time, when I first got elected, that the feedback we got from this office wasn't so good, and we had a group that came in that made it better, and I think this group is making it even better. So I really appreciate that and thank you for your service.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on, guys. Hey, I can't do it without my team. No kidding.
What are the pictures?
Yeah, whatever, come on.
All right, one, two, three. And again. All right.
Yeah, I really do.
I do.
Not a problem.
I love the church.
Thank you. Glad you have to be like.
The next employee we are recognizing is for Employee of the Quarter, and this employee has been here for 17 years.
Wow.
We're here to recognize for Employee of the Quarter, Amy Black. She's with Emergency Services and the Rescue Billing Division.
Deal. Did we hire him young at that point? Very young.
I think we got her right out of high school. Mr. Chairman, once again, thank you. Ms. Amy is part of a department that's kinda, a lot of folks didn't even know about even exists, and that's our EMS billing department. At one time, we were in the low 30s, 40% collection rate. We're up in the mid 60s now, which is fantastic. Underneath her leadership and her team, you don't see or hear much from them, because they're always working and they're always got, and they went from eight or 10 months behind in billing services. And anybody knows how insurance works, the first one to the plate's the one that gets fed, and we were always the last of the plate, so it really helped now that I think we're within 10 days or so of billing. So we're almost to a live billing state, where they're working from one day to the next, which is fantastic. So we're getting them put in in time, which is a benefit back to our county, and that's underneath Ms. Amy's leadership and some software and stuff that we've put in there to help them with their jobs. But day in and day out, she's just better plugging and chugging and doing a fantastic job for our county, and Ms. Amy deserves a lot of the credit, because it was underneath her leadership, but it all happened. So thank you.
Good deal.
Yes. I would like to say thank you. It means a lot to be recognized. I've been here 17 years, and there are days that you don't feel, you know, that you're recognized, and so this really means a lot to me. I couldn't have done it without my team of two. They are awesome workers, and we work together good, and we just try to keep moving forward and keep on collecting and doing good for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's come down from. Hey, guys, why don't we stay up here now? Amy, congratulations. Can everybody be seen?
Standing next to my favorite chairman.
Oh, wow.
I've heard that.
Let's throw that one down quick.
Three, two, one. Congratulations, Amy.
If I had the Julian.
Thank you for everything.
It's fine. It's fine.
I'd like to say a word.
All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Turner, you have the floor?
No, it's easy sometimes for us, giving out these presentations and awards to No, it's easy sometimes for us, given out these presentations and awards, to bypass what actually Amy and them have done. It hasn't been, but just a few years ago, two or three years ago, we were two or three years behind in billing, in this billing stuff, when Amy and them have brought it up to date. And I know that they got some new software or whatever, but that software doesn't plug itself in and operate. It takes somebody that is really wanting to do better to bring it forward, and she has. So I think hearing that that's within 10 days is a tremendous thing when we were three years behind at one time on billings. So I just want to commend her and her department for trying to make the county a better place by getting this done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item on our agenda, this is the riveting part of our meeting. Julian Holmes Young will actually take over now and tell you about the countywide projects update. Get your pen and paper ready. There will be a test at the end of this.
Thank you, Chairman. As a simple reminder, this is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by county departments. It is intended to be a snapshot of those most important to the commission, administration, or our citizens. With that, we will begin with our Port of Putnam. Port staff continues to work with the United States Army Corps of Engineers and consultants to finish the plan, which is tentatively scheduled to be completed by March of 2024. Upon approval of the plan, the Army Corps of Engineers will start planning the dredging of the navigable channel connecting Port Putnam to the federal navigable waterway along the St. John's River. During its October 25th meeting, the Florida Seaport Transportation and Economic Development Council reviewed the staff-composed white paper, along with later-mentioned Port Master Plan, and as a result, adopted a resolution finding Port Putnam a viable port and determining that Port Putnam is able to retain its membership on the council and is now eligible for state seaport funds. Port staff has composed a Port Master Plan that satisfies the provisions of Section 163 dot 3178K of the Florida statutes. And upon adoption, Port County, Putnam County Port Authority would make Port Putnam eligible to receive funding from the Florida Seaport Transportation and Economic Development Council, a key source of port funding in the state of Florida. Port and Putnam County staff have been working with the United States Maritime Administration, a division of the United States Department of Transportation, to determine the National Environmental Protection Act status of our grant-funded project at Port Putnam. MIRAD determined that no component of our project has significant effects on the human environment, and therefore neither an environmental assessment nor an environmental impact study is required. As a result, the grant agreement that has gone through the approval process in Washington and has now just been passed by your Port Authority, once executed by the chairman and USDOT, Putnam County will be able to procure professional assistance to complete the funded tasks. Animal Control Facility has its final conceptual design plans on the agenda for review by the BOCC today. Pending its approval, we will be able to move them to construction plans. Fire Rescue has the interlock and fire station, the preconstruction meeting for the renovations to the fire rescue station, and for the new covered parking area is currently being scheduled. Parks and Rec has the Theobald Sports Complex refurbishment going. The turf care project has begun on the softball fields at this time. East Palaca Firdapp Grant, the basketball courts have been resurfaced and the gym equipment installed. Currently, we are awaiting the installation of the shade structure. The last part of the product to be completed will be the concrete work. The Bead and Ball Park Playground has been installed, and we are now awaiting the shade structure installation. The Barden Park Swing Sets have been installed. Fort Gates Ferry Landing, the FDOT Bridge Report was obtained for the landings on the west side. Public Works is reviewing the required repairs and determining the best course of action to allow for reopening of the ferry. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing, Palm Avenue to CSX Crossing at the Palaca Fire Department, the interlocal agreement between the City of Palaca and Putnam County was signed on October 31st to fund the budget for shortfall. The expected preconstruction meeting and notice to proceed will be in December. County Road 310 Bridge Rehabilitation, the bridge is open and completed with minor punch list items being finished. Dirt to pave 2022, the design of Phase 2 roads, which includes Fisherman, Creekside, Edgewater, Paradise Point, and Paradise Circle, is anticipated to be ready for construction in February of 2024. Dirt to pave 2023, 21 roads designed in-house are out for bid. The bids are due back December 6th. East Putnam Drainage and Flooding Mitigation, Phase 4. Phase 4 design and bid documents are substantially complete. Advertisement for Construction Services is anticipated to be in November. St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvement, State Road 19 to 309C. Additional funding to expand the project. East Ward along St. John's Avenue has been improved as segments 3 and 4. Segment 5 will extend the ditches to County Road 309C. The amendment will extend the deadline to December of 2024. St. John's Avenue Multi-Use Trail, the St. John's Avenue Drainage Project expansion of scope and funding has caused the construction for this project to be postponed. Coordination with FDOT has allowed this project to be submitted for future funding consideration upon completion of the drainage in the area. South Palm Sidewalk, Drew Street to Silver Lake Drive, the construction is underway, and the date of completion is scheduled for March of 2024. Saratoga Harbor Drainage Projects, the project is complete. James A. Long Elementary and Jenkins Middle School Safe Routes to School, recommendations to terminate the FDOT LAP agreement due to budget over is on today's meeting. County Road 315 Resurfacing, rank order of the CEI firms is on the agenda for approval today. Port Buena Vista Waste Water Treatment Plant Conversion and Sewer Main Extension, pressure testing along Highway 207 is complete. Pressure testing along 207A is scheduled for 11/27. The installation for the force main has begun in Port Buena Vista. Overall, construction is approximately 65% complete, and extended lead times for the generator has resulted in an anticipated completion date of April of 2024. Paradise Point Sewer Hardening and Generator Installation, Public Works is waiting for the amendment to extend the time and increase the funding to be executed. East Palaca Septic to Sewer Project, Phase 4, Public Works is awaiting a proposal from the top-ranked firm to complete the required design services. Notice to the contractor of bid award is sent 10/23/23. County Bridge Repairs 2022, this project is complete with minor punch list items being completed and addressed. East Palaca Water Plant retrofit project, the VFDs have arrived on site and coordination is underway with the contractor to complete all installation activities. The conduit is being installed, and the anticipated completion date is December of 2023. San Mateo Water Extension Project, notice to proceed was issued November 20, 2023, and activities have begun this week. North Putnam Drainage Project, Public Works is awaiting a proposal from Ayers to complete the required design services. All existing stormwater models from St. John's River Water Management District, Florida FDEP, and the Army Corps are being located and obtained prior to the submittal of the proposal to ensure accuracy. South Putnam Drainage Project's final design plans have been received and reviewed. Anticipated we publish the bid in December of 2023. East Palaca Water Main Expansion, the ARPA project, design services are underway, and the advertisement for construction services is anticipated to be in January of 2024. Putnam County Water Infrastructure Project, Army Corps of Engineers funded. Public Works is seeking post-design engineering services needed to advertise the previously completed design of the water main installation along East River Road. Advertisement for Construction Services is anticipated to be in January of 2024. Ash Street Drainage Project, the repairs have been made, and the road will be evaluated for reconstruction shortly. Rio Vista Overlook Point Sewer Project, the survey for design services are underway. The project is anticipated to be advertised for construction in February of 2024. Countywide Striping of 2023 is substantially complete. We are working on a few minor punch list items to close the project. Hoover Road Colvert, which is an HMGP grant-funded project, is a proposal for design services have received, and they are under review. Putnam County Boulevard Lift Station, which is another HMGP grant-funded project, the executive funding agreement has been obtained, and a proposal for design services was sent October 23, 2023. Paradise Point Retention Pond, another HMGP-funded project, the executive funding agreement has been obtained, and a proposal for design services is anticipated to be presented to the BOCC during December 2023. County Road Resurfacing Fiscal Year 2023, staff is reviewing the bids that were received on November 13th and will be forwarding a recommendation. Central Landfill, the tar grinder is set to arrive today. The installation will start on the 29th. Electrical infrastructure and a pole barn will be the final components to get this project completed. The Central Landfill, the sanitation office building is in the permitting stage. We hope to be complete within the next few weeks, and construction will begin. The Central Landfill outbound scale for the landfill is construction with a delivery date scheduled for February of 2023, after which it will be installed. That concludes our podcast.
Who can answer, what was item 10?
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner, you have the floor, sir.
When we started the process for the roads, as far as doing the inside, and we were sending some out, part of the deal was we were going to save time by sending them out. But I guess we've got our engineers so snowed under it this time that they're having trouble doing all of the stuff we got going on. Was that still a wise decision? I guess, JR, is that still a wise decision that we made? Because even though it cost us a little more, it was supposed to save us a lot of time, but it's taken longer to do the outside stuff than it is the stuff that we did in the house and got it on the street. So for future, I'm not saying we can change it or even want to now, but for future consideration, was that still a wise decision?
I think, Mr. Commissioner Turner, sorry, I'm too used to saying chairman. The outside one was done because we didn't have the expertise in-house to deal with the drainage problems in that particular area. So that's why that particular segment of it was sent outside. I still think it was a wise decision because they have a team of engineers that can work on doing that actual design where we had one person. It did speed up the process inside to get the rest of Dirt to pave 2022 out for bid. I mean, that portion is on the street right now for bid that we did design in-house, but that was just one that our engineer did not feel comfortable with doing with the flooding issues that take place in those astronomically high tides and also with the, when we had the hurricanes and storms and all, those road floods. So he wanted assistance with the drainage portion of that. So that's why that actually went outside. But we've got to remember, those were actually designed back in 2015. It was only sent out to do a update to make sure that they would meet today's standard. I actually wrote a note down to check and see why it's taken so long, so I'll make that phone call this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Ms. Wilkinson.
I might have missed it. Did you talk about the north drainage district?
Yes.
We're just still waiting on the engineering to come back for that.
Another engineering issue. Okay, all right. And then, secondly, will you have this online so that our citizens can review it? I want to make sure that it's open.
It goes live as soon as we read it, and then IT updates it to our home webpage. There's a link for the current project.
Okay. I actually knew that. I just wanted to make sure our citizens knew that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any further questions? All right. As you can see, we're kind of busy in this county. We've been busy for a long time. It's hard to get our story out, but I think Julianne and her, our staff does a really good job of getting those planes trained to land as quickly as possible. But that's, thank you for the update, and we appreciate it. We're going to go right into our nine o'clock Planning and Development Public Hearing, even though it's 10:19. Item A, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment. Zach, you have the floor, sir. Page 51 in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in administration, I want to introduce our new planner to Jennifer Gazelle. She will be presenting these first two cases.
Good deal. We'll be easy on you, so go right ahead.
Welcome, Jennifer. Good morning. Are we good on here? Good morning, everyone. Jennifer Gazelle, Planning and Development Services. The first two cases we have are going to be heard concurrently. It's a small-scale amendment, CPA 2300002 and a rezon, REZ 2300007. The application is to amend the future land use map from rural residential to commercial. There, like I said, is a companion application requesting the rezoning of the zoning map from residential 2 to commercial neighborhood C1. The subject property is located at the intersection of County Road 315 North and Main Drive. A 911 address has not been assigned. Parcel identification number is 34092486300000960. The subject parcel is approximately 2.49 acres, and the proposal is to amend the land use classification and the zoning map to allow for a commercial retail store. The 2.49 acre subject parcel is undeveloped with one commercial neighborhood, C1 parcel located directly southeast across the main drive. The parcel has approximately 500 feet of frontage on County Road 315 and approximately 230 feet of frontage on Main Drive. An unapproved platted right-of-way is located along the northeast boundary of the subject parcel. This parcel has existed as a vacant lot for several years. Upon a site visit to this parcel, it appeared to be used as an ATV riding area for the local residents. We have your aerial, zoning map, future land use map, the proposed site plan. The current rural residential future land use map designation does not allow for commercial uses unless approved through a planned unit development. The proposed future land use map amendment and rezoning are compatible with the surrounding uses and would not be incompatible with the future land use designations and zoning designations within the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the future land use map from rural residential to commercial. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from residential 2 R2 to commercial neighborhood C1. At its meeting on October 11, 2023, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request to amend the future land use map from rural residential to commercial and the rezoning from residential R2 to commercial neighborhood C1. Questions?
Any questions for Jennifer? Let me say you did a great job presenting on your first case. Okay. Commissioners, I do have a comment, and I want to say this is going to be a good development for that area. It's a sand pit right now where people go in there, and they do do their four-by-fours in there. But also, every weekend, there's a community yard sale on that corner, and every day just about, and this will really clean that area up. So I look forward to seeing this done. Thank you. Okay.
Public comment.
Yeah. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes, okay?
Absolutely. Good morning. I'm Craig Brazier with CHW. Just want to let you know that we are here representing the application, so if you have any additional questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them, and we do appreciate both staff's recommendation for approval and the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Do we have anybody in the audience in opposition of this request? Thinking, now we're going to close the public comments, and Commissioners, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item 7A, Ordinance 2023-022, Small-Scale Future Land Use Map Amendment, CPA 23-000002. And also, since they were presented together, item 7B, Ordinance Number 2023-023, Rezone, REZ 23-000007.
Second.
Proper motion, we have a proper second. Yes, Commissioner Turner.
Can we do both of them under one motion? I don't believe we can. I believe it's going to have to be two motions.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Well, I thought since she presented them together, we can do it together, but that's okay. Lesson learned.
Why don't you...
Trying to save time, but I just didn't think...
Right. I was trying to be efficient, exactly. All right. So I move approval of item 7A.
Second.
We have a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Zach, you're doing the rezoning?
Yes, sir. The rezoning was just done.
That was part of it. She just needs to make the second part of the motion.
Move approval of item 7B, Ordinance 2023-023.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. All right, item 7C, the text amendment.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is case LDC 23-000003. Of course, since this is a text amendment, a proposed text amendment, it's going to require two hearings by the Board of County Commissioners. According to statute, the second shall be held during a 5:00 PM meeting on a weekday. However, the board, by majority vote, can decide to have it on a regularly scheduled meeting.
Majority plus one.
Majority plus one, excuse me. So this is a citizen-initiated application to modify two LDC code sections, 45-1036 for type 3 subdivisions and 45-1052, the standards and restrictions of a lot split. For sake of saving time, I'm going to jump straight to the strike-through underlines that we have prepared, and I'll go through the revisions that are going to occur. So out of LDC section 45-1036 for type 2 subdivisions, we are striking the Agriculture 2 future land use designation as it no longer exists. We are increasing the allowed number of lots to be created from 6 to 11. We are increasing the allowed number of lots to be created from six to 10 to coincide with an allowance for dirt roads and 45-617 as documented in the staff reports. We've added that stepchildren can be a recipient of one of these family divisions. We are striking entirely the requirement that the land shall be owned for a minimum of 10 years before the division can occur. The next ones, they're just changing numbers since we struck four. This is a lengthy one. We are adding a new number eight. Essentially what this states is an effort to restrict the creation of illegal subdivisions and an effort to remove the ownership requirement prior to the division. We're suggesting that we place an ownership requirement after the division has occurred so that we can ensure that the property stays in the family as it was intended. So staff recommended a three-year ownership period after the division occurred. The planning commission recommended that we bump that up to five years. There are four conditions in which the land can be conveyed and I'll briefly go over those real quick. So item A, transfer of the parcel to the owner's estate upon death, either through test date or intestate succession as provided by state law, or transfer of the parcel to an immediate family member of the owner's or an immediate family member of the owner of the parent parcel and the original type III subdivision application. Involuntary transfer of the parcel arising out of a judgment or order entered against the owner and rendered by a court of competent jurisdiction, or relocation due to an employment or educational opportunity, provided that the relocation would require the owner to move his or her permanent residence as defined in Florida statute. The revision to 45-1052, the standards and restrictions of a lot split, we're suggesting that once a parcel is split via the lot split procedure prior to this proposal, the only way to further divide was through a type I subdivision, platted subdivision. We're suggesting that it can be further divided through one of the subdivisions listed in Article 12, which would be a platted subdivision, family subdivision, or a large lot subdivision. The family subdivision and large lot are administrative reviews approved by staff. Of course, the type I subdivision is approved by the Board of County Commissioners and then we just did some scrivenerers there and capitalized B-O-C-C. So again, the staff is recommending approval of what's been presented to you and at the October 11 Planning Commission meeting, it was a unanimous approval for both text amendments with that increase from three to five years. And staff is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners motion to schedule the second and final public hearing for the proposed text amendment.
Okay. Mr. Adams, Zach, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, so in, I guess it's paragraph seven, you still have six in there two times instead of 10, so I think that needs to be corrected, at least in the copy that I have. And then you reference paragraph A and I think that actually should be paragraph one. So I don't know if maybe at some point it went from 1A to 11, just because normally you would have A, B, C, D after one. So just either they need to be labeled letters or that has to be changed to one.
Yes, sir. We'll clean up the ordinance before it gets back in front of you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
A couple of questions. While I think this is a step in the right direction, you know, it's not quite where I wanted to be, but we're getting there. On what would now be paragraph four, an individual, I know this isn't in the, in what you're suggesting, but it's a question that I have. An individual is eligible to receive a parcel through the type III family subdivision one time only. So even though they can create six, 10 lots now, it's a one-time, you only get in the whole ownership of the property or in the whole life of the property can only be split one time? Is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Or subdivided one time?
That regulation is to be implied that you can only split your property one time for your daughter and once she has her piece of land, you can't split it again to give her another piece.
Okay. All right. And then.
In other words, you can't split it up 10 times for the same sibling.
Same daughter, I get it. Okay.
Right.
I'm a little bit smarter than that, Terry. I got it.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to imply that, my apologies.
All new lots created through the family subdivisions shall have a frontage on a county-maintained road. I guess I want to know why because, you know, I think, I go back to think about Mrs. Moats and she truly didn't want her family to have those properties on the road. She wanted to be able to create a road through the middle of her property and have two parcels inside of her 80 acres. And if she could give legal and physical access, then why couldn't she have done that? So why do we have to be on a county-maintained road if they're willing to meet all the rest of the criteria?
So it's worth noting that with a type III subdivision, they don't have to have frontage. That's the preferred method just to ensure proper access and drainage. They can also have a 66-foot wide easement providing access to a public or a private road. And in the case with Ms. Moats, unfortunately, because this text amendment didn't exist at that time, she was only able to further divide through the type I subdivision. When you do a type I subdivision, you have to dedicate right-of-way to Putnam County and that right-of-way has to be paved. So for her, it was just more cost-effective to have the frontage on, I forget the name of the road, but on that north side of the parcel.
Okay, very good. Thank you for answering my questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? We're not going to vote on it today, but I am going to take audience questions if anybody, we have any cards? Thank you, Ashley. And our first speaker, we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and we will be keeping time, but we will let you know if you run over and just try to finish up your comments as quick as you possibly can. Our first comment, David Minor. If you will, sir, Mr. Minor, state your name and address for the record.
David Minor, 116 Sheffy Road, Palatka, Florida. So we've got a parcel that we intend to divide for our children. All right, we all know that we want our children to do it better and have it easier than we have, okay? We have a trust set up and the way the trust is written and of course, the Florida statute about, and Tim Parker's been helping me with the way we're doing it, but you have trustees and you have beneficiaries. My wife and I are the trustees, the children are the beneficiaries. Their name will not go on the deed of the property except for being beneficiaries, okay? So doing so, we need to make sure there's stipulations in the process that they can lease the property for 99 years. The Florida statute is 98 years, but we do 99 years. That allows them to file homestead exemption and that's their house. Now, we all know that even back when we were 20, we made mistakes that we were not exactly happy with financially and other ways, okay? So not only were we trying to give our children a chance to have a good life and stuff and a nice home, but the fact is protect themselves against themselves. I've read things where people make mistakes, they take and they, oh, well, we got this property, let's just get a mortgage, we'll go buy a boat. Well, they end up losing their boat and that's not the purpose that we want. We want to keep the property in the trust, therefore their name's not necessarily on it. They're a beneficiary of the state, of the trust. And in Florida statute 196.041, it allows that in the wording that we can do that. We have that concern. The property's about 13 acres. It's got three parcels. Zach and I have been talking about trying to figure out how to make it all nicer, divided the way it is and move lot lines and stuff like that and we're working on that. But my concern is once we get done with that, are we going to be able to build each one of our children a house? We're going to build four, according to what I'm understanding, dividing at 10, okay? We do have 66 even going to the state road and then we have another driveway, both DOT driveways. So we meet a lot of that already, but then we hear of other problems of having, where you can't have more than 10 easements out of a certain entrance. Well, that messes us up again. So we got to have some kind of way of working around all these problems and I know it's a lot. The trustee and the beneficiary, we got to look at that as it is. My wife and I are the trustees. Once I'm gone, you know, the children will have more control. We don't want them to have control at 20. We don't want them to have control at 40. Don't we, aren't we better off at 40 making wise decisions than we are when we're 20? We all know that we do that. The responsibility of the easement, we have a 66-foot easement. We also, that's my.
That's your time, but go ahead.
I got four bullet parts, so that's three minutes on each bullet part, right?
Just quickly get to it.
So, you know, there's just a lot of that type of stuff. Also, whether my kids can pull the permit even though it's in the trustee's name, okay? Because that's one of the benefits that we wanted to do. In the old biblical times, the family got together and built each one of the children a house. Well, that's what we want to do. We want them to have the best equity they can have and that's called sweat equity and we want them to work together. So we want them to be able to pull their own permit and we build it together.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Turner?
David, the one thing that we've got to be careful of with these changes is that we don't build something in that can be completely misused by somebody without the best intentions in the world. And so if we was to add that in there today, what you're asking, that you could put your land in a trust and then you could just sell the land in the trust or you could give the land and the lots in the trust to somebody as a beneficiary, that could be very ripe for abuse. And I'm not saying that I'm completely against it, I'm just saying you're going to have to come up with something with Zach that's going to try to offset the misuse that that's going to open the door for, because there's going to be some serious misuse if you just put your land in a trust and all of a sudden you can break it up into a family subdivision. That's not the intent of what they're trying to do today.
Right, and I understand that and I would not want to have your job to try to figure out what all the negative part will be. And, you know, I can't answer for everybody else but myself and, you know, having it for three years or five years or whatever, I plan on not letting them have control on it for 20 years. So that won't happen in my case, but like you said, every case is different.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any further questions? I do think, Mr. Minor, Ms. and Zach, could y'all work together on finding some kind of common ground on that? Because I feel the same way. If we can find a way to get there and help out these family trusts, if you will, that are confined, you know, and what's your thoughts, Mr. Baker?
You know, if I may before you.
Yes, you may.
It might be the way to handle this, instead of through a trust and a beneficiary of the trust, it might be better to try and figure out a way to have, to be able to go to the ZBOA and ask for special use or an exception to be able to build more than one accessory structure on a piece of property. That way, if you had 10 kids and you didn't want them to own the land, you could build 10 accessory structures for your 10 kids on your one parcel. But it would be just another way to look at it, but it's what I'm saying then, if that would handle it without opening the door to somebody else to be able to split up a non-conforming subdivision, which is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, maybe you can put that in the wording that there's a benefit, that you can do that, whether it's the board or whether it's the health, you know, whether it's the.
Well, it'd almost have to be done by special exception, but I'm a big advocate that you could, that you should be able to go before a committee of your peers of ZBOA or a planning commission, depending on what your ask is, and ask them if you can convince them that it wouldn't be harmful for the welfare or the safety of the other citizens in Putnam County or harm the county itself, then you could get them to approve it. So I'm just not saying that that's the answer, but that's probably the route that I'd rather go with than allowing a beneficiary of a trustee to own a lot within the trust, because then they could just transfer the beneficiary of the trustee at some point and move forward and it could be real misuse of what they're trying to accomplish here.
And I have no problem with that and reaching 10 children, you know, at four, the time doesn't take long.
Zach, do you have a comment?
I just want to state that, you know, the intent here is to allow more single parcels and single-family zoning districts. We could explore the option of a special use permit, but I'd be very hesitant to look at having multiple accessory structures or accessory dwelling units on one single parcel. With his property in particular, we've got three parcels there. We can change the boundary lines to get him three primaries and three accessory dwelling units. The other thing I might, would recommend is combine all the parcels into one, get it under unified control in that trust, do a PUD and make it a family compound and we could look at applying a density exception to that specific PUD. Mr. Minor, unfortunately, just has one of those super unique situations that there's not a clear-cut answer to, though we're happy to try and figure out a solution with him, that's for sure.
So I want to make sure, Mr. Minor's issue is because he's got a trust. Is that correct? Because he's not putting each lot in his children's name?
Yes, ma'am. The purpose of the family subdivision is to convey a piece of land to your family member for them to build a home.
And you don't believe a trust does that? Because, I mean, I think that the wording in the trust governs who would own the property and so if the trust is saying that this is going to go to his children and he's got a 99-year lease on it, why aren't we, and why aren't we listening to that trust? I mean, that has, that's a legal binding document.
And with that, I think it would be staff's best decision to work with our legal counsel to figure out if that is an appropriate strategy.
And if I can respond to some of that. And the reason for that is because the beneficiaries can be changed by the trustee and some of, I mean, what you described is one concern that Mr. Minor has and he and I have talked, like he also wants to be able to pull owner-occupied permits to build these as well. So, I mean, there's different layers of kind of the regulations that Mr. Minor wants to be able to sidestep for this and it's not that he can't do it, he can do it through the subdivision regulations that we have now. This is just preferential way through the family lot subdivision exemption that allows this, so.
Have we looked at how other counties are handling this or are other counties not allowing trusts in names of family subdivisions?
Not, it's not that they're not allowing the trust, they don't allow the family subdivision. They'll usually ask them to go through the subdivision requirement and through that process, there may be a request for a variance or exception like Commissioner Turner referenced. So it's not that it can't be done, it's just the process that he would have to go through to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further questions or comments? Okay, so Mr. Leary, thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Leary, you're next. If you will, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Phil Leary, 6052 Silver Lake Drive, Palatka. I'm representing today a number of people that have called me over the last three years, you know, wanting help in navigating this process, which was not the intent of the legislature in 1985 when the Growth Management Act was passed. I was a young planner, lobbied on behalf of Clay County. In 1986, they added the glitch bill that basically included the land development code and land development regulations. I compliment the citizen that brought this forward. I am just ecstatic that, you know, finally, after three years, and I've been preaching to y'all for more than that, saying we need something different. This isn't working. It's essentially a solution looking for a problem. I can tell you, Commissioner Turner, I bet there's not one instance in this county nor any rural counties of our size where somebody has abused the family heirs transfer that's outlined in Florida statutes in the Comprehensive Planning Act 163.
I wasn't alluding to that, Phil. I was alluding to the trust and the beneficiary thing.
Oh, yeah, well, that's something very simple. I think that Zach had the perfect answer, just, you know, do it as one parcel and then go from there. So, you know, what the legislative intent was is that they would have a provision for families that, like Ms. Moats, that had kids and grandkids and had large tracts of land that they wanted to allow them to have a homestead, not a subdivision, a homestead where their kids could be there. And that's been something that's been going on way before comprehensive planning or zoning in this state. And I can tell you that the local government, you're the governing body, you make the decisions. There is no more Department of Community Affairs. There's a bureau in the Department of Commerce of all places. The state, there's no, you know, withholding of revenue sharing like they held over our heads when. our heads when Mark Scruby and I, then Clay County Attorney, had to go to DCA in Tallahassee fighting the one-unit-per-acre agricultural density designation that was in place prior to 1985. So, here's how they do it. And what the, the requirement was, is that based on BEBR, University of Florida Business and Economic, uh, Research, which is the entity that the state looks at for population growth, that your existing residential density, that's taking in, into account every piece of property that you have in the zoning residentially that would allow a residential unit. Well, your capacity could not be more than 10% over your projected population growth. And the only way to, to do that would be to take all these agricultural lands and put these 1 to 10 and 1 to 20, uh, units, uh, designations on them. It, it really affected the agricultural, um, industry in that it, they lost a huge amount of their financial ability, because the value of property in Florida is not the agricultural value, it's the development value.
Right.
But very quickly, um, this is a step in the right direction, as let, as Commissioner Wilkinson said. But I do think, as you, and I understand now that you've contracted with a consultant to do, to, you know, rewrite your LDRs, um, that we reevaluate and look at this, and we can come up with a streamlined process. We had a very simple process in Clay County that, uh, Mark and I worked on and came up with. What we have now is three and a half pages. I sent this to Larry Corn, and he asked me to relay this to you today, because he couldn't be here. He's got 28 acres in San Mateo, 1,000-foot of road frontage. All he wants to do is to give his kids and his grandkids a parcel so that they can build their homestead there. That's not a subdivision. Family compound, I guess you can call it whatever you want. But that's not what the intent of the statute was. I'm, I don't know that I can do it, because I, I don't lobby for anybody but the school board now, and I do that for free, or not for free, but, you know, as part of my duties as, as a school board member. But I'm going to try to get language amended into the statute that basically says preempt a county from requiring a homestead family transfer from being, being exempt from life split requirements or subdivision requirements. When it was before, when we didn't have this, there was no problems, and there's not going to be any problems. So, essentially, we created a bureaucratic nightmare. When I sent this to Larry and ten, asked him to read it, he said, "I'm not going to read that. I want you to straighten it out for me." And I said, "Well, it may be more than I can do." So, anyway, I'll stop there and answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just in quick response to that, I'll, I'll let you know that I've worked with Mark Scruby quite a bit, and I'm aware of the DCA that then transitioned into the DEO, and now it's called Florida Commerce. But as far as the abuses that take place, I had one within the past year where a property owner tried to split his lot 32 different times, and wanted to do it without any type of county approval, so-
In Clay County?
Uh, no, not in Clay County, and I don't want to kind of tip off how that actually happens, but-
Well, I'm not saying that, that it doesn't happen. There's always, always bad apples, but I don't think the intent of-
Go ahead.
Of landowners in Putnam County, that's her, this is the, one of the poorest counties in the state, highest poverty rate out of, fourth out of 67 counties. The value that people have in this county is the land that they have, and being able to help their kids and their grandkids and that type of thing. This is just a bureaucratic nightmare for them. I don't even take cases anymore with this, and I'm hoping that we can get this worked out and develop a streamlined process that'll event, you know, that will preclude any abuses, but at the same time, allow people to do something that is their constitutional rights under the private, you know, under private property rights.
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
Putnam County wants landowners to be able to leave their children properties. Mr. Minor's, as Zach pointed out, unique situation is he doesn't want his children to have title to it. So, that creates a nuanced layer that is a little more difficult to deal with. And I understand why he wants to do it that way. But actually, Putnam County is very generous in how well we allow people to split and leave property within their family.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments concerning this item? Okay, right now, we need to set a date and a time for our next hearing of this. Correct?
What's the meeting of the first, what's the, uh, date of the first meeting in December?
December 12th.
I move that we, uh, hear this, move this forward and hear it on December the 12th at 9:00, or thereafter as quickly as possible.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it, four to one. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect the boards to engage or debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting entrance on both sides of the room, and should be submitted to our deputy clerk, Ashley, who sits to my left or right of the podium. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Any public comments on agenda items? Okay, we're going to close our public comments on agenda items, and we're going to go to our consent agenda. Commissioner, wait a minute.
You're fine.
I did have a public comment on agenda items. I'm sorry.
That's on new business?
Yep. Uh, that's new business, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, consent agenda, Mr. Pickens, anything you'd like to pull?
I have none.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Item F.
Item F. Mr. Adams, Zach?
I have none.
And Mr. Turner?
I have none.
And I have none. So, Mrs. Wilkinson?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move-
Yeah.
I move, I move we pass item A, B, C, D, E, G, H.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item's F, Ms. Wilkinson.
I just would like further explanation from staff as to how we got to where we're at on this.
Excuse me, this is part of the, um, part of the safe routes to schools, and it was a sidewalk that was between Jenkins Middle School and James A. Long.
Mm-hmm.
There is currently a sidewalk there, the repairs were done to, that were the necessary repairs. Um, the state DOT budgeted $136,000. The one and sole only bid that came in was $360,000. Um, and they, according to the school district, there's no intention of reopening the, um, school at, at Jenkins.
Mm-hmm.
And all the sidewalk repairs were made to make it an accessible sidewalk from the north side of Palatka to James A. Long Elementary. So, we approached the DOT about, um, removing this agreement, because number one, we're going to need another quarter of a million dollars, uh, for a project, and they, and we had to prioritize, and we had things like County Road 315, County Road 310 Bridge, and I just didn't think it could reach the top of the priority list for DOT, so we were able to put a compliant sidewalk up there with just some minor repairs.
Okay, very good. I just wanted mostly for the citizens to hear that. I think that's very important. With that being said, I'm of approval of item F on our consent agenda.
Now, proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Under new business, we'll start off administration, December meeting schedule. Mr. Suggs, you got that?
Sure, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, uh, second meeting in December has normally not been held by the Board of Accounting Commissioners, but it is advertised, and it happens to fall this year, uh, on a, uh, on a holiday schedule for the county offices will be closed, so staff is looking for direction from the board to go ahead, and as we have done in the past-
Need a motion or consent?
Need a motion to, uh, to-
Move that we cancel the second meeting in December.
Second.
Got a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Next one is the Bonnie Melrose Christmas Parade. Mr. Suggs, you have that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we let them close this one extra road. That's all they're asking.
That's all they're asking.
Second.
Can we have proper motion in two seconds? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Next item is the animal control, the animal control shelter plans. Julianne, is that you?
Yes, sir. It's a, a combination of Mr. Helms and Ms. Tillman, as well as myself. You have in your agenda packet, staff has worked diligently with the, uh, design-build contractor, who is with us today, as well as his engineer, uh, to come up with the conceptual drawing that you have before you. It has gone to the Animal Advisory Committee, who approved to move it forward with one member who abstained from the vote due to a conflict of interest. Otherwise, it was unanimously approved. Um, so, it is there before you for us to get some consensus from the Board of Accounting Commissioners, to allow the engineers to move it forward into the actual stages that we will need for construction plans.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, my only concern about this was in the preliminary schematics that you sent us, preliminary floor plans, that didn't have any entry, pedestrian entry doors into the two-dog facilities. Um, I think that, uh, number one, that won't pass building code, to have to roll up a door and, and walk around a kennel to get in, and so, um, I think that both ends of those two-dog facility buildings are going to have to have at the minimum of at least a double pedestrian door with a one active leaf or whatever to make that work, to be able to get supplies in and out and what have you. So, you know, I felt like probably y'all were planning on doing that, but my problem is it doesn't show that. And I think that we either got to discuss it and say that it's going to happen from the builder, or from somebody where it's on the record that it is going to happen, where we didn't approve a set of plans that clearly won't meet building code.
Yes, sir. So, we, um, I have discussed with them, so going into the, into the animal shelter, the dog kennels, I would say is, you'd have a double door there, and on the backside, there was a door on each. So, we've added one to the hallway, leaving the building, and then a double door coming in, so you can come in and then exit. Um, I haven't spoken with them about that, so that's something we're going to add in there. There's also other things in the plans, in the actual drainage, because each kennel will be sloped to have the stuff run to the back, and all of that. There's some things in it that we have discussed, and I agree with you. So, we have discussed that.
Okay, uh, part of this discussion I would also like to bring up, that I think there's some confusion in the public about where this facility is going to be built.
I agree.
It's not going to be built on the Beck property that's just to the south or west of the bus garage. That is not where it's going. It's going, if you turn into the jail, go around the corner in front of the old EMS building, and make the first road to the right, which is Lime Rock right now, down at the end of that road, in that pasture, is where it's going to go. That's where it's been selected to be.
Yes, sir.
So, I just thought that needed to be said on television for anybody that cares to listen. I'm sure that some people are still going to say that it's going to go over there, just because that might stir controversy. But that's not where it's going to go. It's going to go where I just said it's going to go.
And that is not a jurisdiction of wetland.
No, there's no wetland involved in that area at the end of that road down there whatsoever, not in the five, about the five-acre piece that we're going to use for this animal facility.
That's correct.
And Commissioner, just, um, on that topic, if you'll remember back when we started this project, a, as per the state statutes, a site selection committee was convened-
That's right.
And they reviewed up to 10 different site selections and brought them back to you, and that parcel that you're referring to there was, um, in fact, voted as the ultimate site to be, uh, where the facility will be housed.
Commissioners, if you have a comment or staff, please raise your hand. Our, our system just went down as far as our button system, so-
Well, I'm ready to move this forward. I think we should ask for some public comment first, in case somebody wants to talk about it, but other than that, I'm ready to move it forward with the, with the, uh, changes that we talked about this morning.
If we can put a shovel in the ground very, very soon.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tim Hotelling, you have a card that you've put out? If you'll come up and speak and give your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seems like we're back on. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Same three minutes Mr. Leary got? My name's Tim Hotelling, 105 Riverside Way, San Mateo. Um, I'm speaking about this because of questions that evolved in the only documents that I've received, which are the drawings, which I think is what you guys have got, that brought forth more questions than answers. I ended up talking for the longest yesterday with, uh, a person with the paws of Putnam, which is, has quite a, a bunch of, uh, experience, goes way back, 1950s, and he supposedly provided you all, uh, a five-page document that spoke of drainage. I was happy to hear just now that there was drainage, because there's nothing that you've received that speaks of drainage. It doesn't show anything. Speaks of ventilation, that was the biggest thing. I look at the drawings, and the, the gable sides of the building are totally closed up. How do you get air in? There's a, a standard of ventilation requiring for 10 to 20 full fresh air changes per hour. That's not written in. We were, the county was supposed to have an owner's layout and design requirements to guide this consultant. That hasn't happened. I've asked for multiple documents, and I get, there's nothing responsive. That's one of them. Primary enclosures as presented supposedly do not meet any humane standard of care. And, oh, questions of, supposedly when you bring an animal in, you have to keep them for 24 hours to see if they've got any kind of diseases? Has that area been located? Uh, if you have, uh, an animal that you then find has, uh, the kennel cough or whatever, has that been located? Is that on the plans? I've been unable to identify it. And these are all important questions that I really hope that you all will ask before you, you know, go further down the road. And I tried to ask, I tried to find out that it had been asked and answered by submitting requests for, for public records, and everything I get is, there is no record responsive to this request. So, it's not like I really want to get up here and talk to you all, but there's really important questions in, in design, because it is a specialty building. And as, as you, Mr. Turner, said, it's not the fact that it may not be, but it's not on paper.
I understand. Thank you.
I think-
Thank you, Mr. Hotelling. Mr. Turner, you got the floor?
Mr. Hotelling, you do realize that this is the preliminary schematic, which is the, basically the layout, what the buildings are going to look like, and basically preliminary schematic. You're wanting to know what color we're going to dress the baby before we even know if the lady's expecting or not. I mean, seriously, I'm not trying to be smart here. It, this is at the proper stage. Those questions you all asked, you asked are totally valid, every one of them. But it's just too early to be able to answer some of them yet. There is no documents that have been made yet that will answer those questions, because it's too early in the program. It's in basis of design at the moment.
You've had a gentleman that professes great experience at building these, even though, anyhow, I'm not going to go there.
Thank you. Mr. Hotelling?
And, just to-
No, we're going to move on, okay?
The diagram that you received-
Mr. Hotelling, thank you.
Doesn't function.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that-
Personal opinion.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak about this? Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. My legal name is Virginia Delgado Oakwood. They call me G. Oakwood. I own Crescent City Kennel, and I'm the president of ARC Animal Rescue. I want to say that the plans are fantastic. I own a kennel, like I stated. There is an isolation room. There will be drainage. The committee has reviewed it for many, many years. And I want to add that University of Florida Veterinary School did an assessment, needs assessment, and that information was provided. So I want to say that we need to move forward with this new shelter, and it should be called, which we think we are going to change it, to Putnam County Animal Services, not Control. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Okaughy. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you so much. My name is Diane Kelly. I live in Crescent City, 123 Lake Sideline. I do volunteer, I'm a volunteer working with Ginny Delgado Oakwood, who you just heard from. I actually do grant writing for her and the, and the team. And I moved here from Jacksonville, Florida about three years ago and was very familiar with the Humane Society and certainly what First Coast No Harmless Pets does. And one of the things that I've been really kind of saddened about in Putnam County is how animals are treated and the excessive amount of animals that are roaming the streets and suffering and dying and having babies after being hit by cars, and it's just heart-wrenching. And I see so much on the internet in terms of social media and certainly with my own eyes, and I'm just so thankful that finally it looks like Putnam County is starting to really progress when it comes to animal care. I was excited to learn what Julian and the whole team here is doing to try to get a whole new, not animal control, but animal services organization off the ground. I think it's going to be great for the county. I think it's going to be wonderful for the citizens who love the animals and certainly will be, most importantly, really good for animals in the community. So thank you so much for being supportive. Sounds like so far, very support, or a lot of support is being given, and I'm very optimistic that we can really move Putnam County forward in terms of animal care and certainly for the people who love them. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, you have the floor?
I'm sorry, that was from a while ago, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Is there anybody else? All right, hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board? What do we, what do we need to do? Just move it forward? Wave of support?
I move that we, that we approve the plans as presented today for the next step with the suggest, with the recommendations that were mentioned here today from the board. And as part of the plan, I would also like to start calling this facility the Animal Services Shelter.
Second for discussion.
Putnam County Animal Services Shelter, not Animal Control.
Second for discussion.
Yes, we have a proper motion and second, open for discussion, Mr. Adams.
My question is, how many animals, how many dogs can we facilitate in the current facility?
Please come to the microphone.
She said we have 45 regular and then we have some, yeah, ish, and then we have expansion that goes up to, help me, I don't remember. As many as we need, because we don't turn dogs away hardly, but as.
Correct.
I would say estimate it would be.
Sixties?
Yeah, 60 total.
What I was told, 64.
Yes, sir.
And then cats?
Wow, there's a lot.
I know we got cats stacked up a bit.
We have two separate areas right now. We have probably about 30, 40-ish.
Good. Thank you.
Kathy, while you're at the, at the podium, could you address or, or you, Mr. Helms, speak about the isolation area that was brought up? Because I do think we need to discuss that publicly.
Yes, and so we have an intake where we will, it will be in the backside of the, I would say, the business side of the building. And so we have an intake, so if we have animals who test positive or have different things that we have, we will have kennels in there in the intake that we can isolate them. And so they won't go back into general population where we will spread things. So we do have an intake where we will, it will be very much like a, we have a washdown station and like a vet where we'll check them out and, and look at them. If there is something, then we go to the vet services if it does require, if animal's injured, so that's where we'll kind of, the intake is where we will do that and make that assessment, what we need to do.
Okay.
Because we don't want anything spreading. I promise, we don't want that happening, so.
That's not what we want. And then between each, and I know we talked about this, but between each kennel, there is some kind of, I don't know if you call it bark control or barrier that helps with, with keeping the animals from fighting amongst themselves within the fenced area.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and then in the future, hopefully, we'll be able to make some runs and have some other things that we could do as well. And as far as ventilation, I know that's been a big thing, so I'll bring it up again and we can talk about it. There'll be fans, the doors truly stay open. The, the roll-up doors truly stay open the majority of the time. They're only down during really inclement weather, hurricanes, really, you know, really freezing weather, really, really hot weather, so probably less than 5% of the time even of the year.
Yeah, very rarely do they have, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, very rarely. It would only be a few days of the year or less than.
And just like Florida, if it's cold in the morning, it's usually in the 60 by the afternoon, so they got to come up.
Yeah, there's a 33.
So we might be, you know, it might be that night and then that morning we have to pull them up, so it's, it's a process and it's, they're there every day, so.
And sometimes they're just partially pulled down, because if you just need to keep the rain off, but you don't necessarily need to close them. So you always will have that ventilation as well as fans and other ventilation. I did see on the, on one of the schematics that there was at the end, some gables and stuff like that, so it looks like there is ventilation. All right, those were my questions.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, aye?
Yeah, so the one other thing that I wanted to ask about, and just because we don't have a, a site plan, I know that's probably coming, but during the discussion, there was a original design, we, we had it set out here and we all went out there, and this was before Leoto was here, where we kind of made sure that this buildings were positioned in such a way that we could expand them as necessary. So I would have liked to see this, where they're going to be placed on the property as part of this, but do we have an idea of how we're going to place them? Is the administrative building going to be in the front and then the other two parallel so that they can be elongated? And can these buildings, we're building, be elongated?
That's actually a very good request. I'd like to join that request and get some kind of a site plan of.
Yes, sir. We can provide you a site plan, but we did ask the contractor during the time that, so the, the two kennel areas can be expanded upon and there's ability on the property for them to be added on an additional kennel space as future needs. So that was part of the consideration, but I'm sure we can put it on a, on a site plan cover sheet, but that was one of the requests we did make of the contractor, make sure everything was expandable and we could add on additional kennel spaces as needed in the future.
Well, I don't know if it's fair to ask the designer to lay it out or not, because we're doing a lot of the things on the project that the designer's not doing. We're doing the fencing and the kennels and the runs and the, the large animal fencing and the stuff that we're not expecting him to do. And so, you know, if, if he's gracious enough to come up with a site plan, we need to have enough, enough interjection into it that we consider all these other things that he's not going to, that's not going to be part of his project, to be fair to him.
Mr. Pickens, you have the floor, sir?
Yeah, that was probably my biggest question, and I appreciate Paul asking that, because I just truly believe, get this thing built, it's going to fill up, and we're going to need to be able to expand. So Kathy, you have been involved in this process, and I appreciate that, your staff, what you do. I don't want your job, and I appreciate the Animal Control Advisory Board, because they've been working on this for years and wanting, you know, a new facility. This meet your needs? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm doing this. You live this every day. We don't, so we just hear it from the public. So can you just make a few comments?
Yes, sir. They have kept us involved in everything, and we are happy with the layout and everything, and we believe it's going to be good, and we're looking forward to it, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Solam.
Kathy, one more thing I want to say before we, along with Commissioner Pickens said, the board recently changed some things where common sense fund, if you will, whereas we're going through the process and you see something. I want to hear from you if you go, man, we're right here and we'd really like to do this right now, because that's the time to get it done, not when it's over with and we have to come back and revisit it. So if there is something, again, this is in your, your expertise, bring it to the board, please. Commissioner Wilkson, you have the floor?
I just wanted to thank the Crescent City group for coming and sharing your thoughts, Ms. Oakwood, and I know you're, how passionate you are about the animals, and I really appreciate that and your viewpoint, and thank you for serving on the Animal Advisory Committee. And Kathy, thank you for your leadership in this. This is a step in the right direction, and we, it's one step at a time, right? And that's what we do, one day at a time. You know, obviously, I wish this would have been built already. I'm sure every commissioner up here has the same sentiment, but we are moving in the right direction. I don't want to be holding it up. I want to move it forward. I want to see this thing built. I will be so excited, along with you and your staff, to cut the ribbon and let's get some, you know, get that beautiful building done. And so just thank you for your leadership and your passion.
All right. Board, we have a proper motion and second, I will call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. We're going to take a three-minute break.
We're going to get started very soon.
Okay, okay, very good.
All right, we're going to call back to order our Board of County Commission meeting. And the next item is D animal control spade neuter portable trailer. Mr. Helms, you have this?
Yes, sir. I'm Brian Helms, Executive Director of Deliverables Services. I have the ARC president here, Ms. Jenny Oakwood. She's presenting the spade and neuter proposal. Her aim is to partner with Putnam County, offering 25-plus monthly spade and neuter services with animal control in the community. The ARC presented the program, funded requests to the Animal Control Advisory Board on November 16th, 2023. They seek the BOC contribute 25,000 as a local match for the grant, facilitating the procurement of necessary upfront equipment to launch a program. The Animal Advisory Board voted four to one in favor of supporting this. So I also have Ms. Oakwood, she's going to do a little presentation that she did with us there and kind of go over that with you guys, so you guys can have insight into that. And recommend action is just looking at advice from the B O C C, what you guys would like to do with this. After her presentation, we can go from there, okay?
Good, thank you. Yes, Mr. Turner, you have the floor.
Before she starts, Brian, so, and maybe she'll cover this, but basically what we're doing is she's asking us to upfront 25,000 for the program, trailer, equipment, or what have you, that we would reap back later on by services that they would render to the county free of charge, that we pay for basically now.
Well, we don't necessarily pay for them now, like, we don't have a spade and neuter service because we actually lost that grant. So this would be something in lieu of that. We have, right now, our animals that are at our facility, we work with the University of Florida to get that done now, but this would be more the community base that this would be done for.
So the 25 that they're proposing, that would be offered through this program, are services that we're not having right now. It would be in addition to what we're doing at the present time, and it would be 25 spraying neuters for the, 300 a year spraying neuters for the, for the community?
Yes, sir.
Do we do 25 spade and neuters a month in the community?
I mean, that would be with the vets and things like that. I mean, as of the animal control, we probably do, with our animal control facility, we do probably way more than that.
But they're not going to do it for animal control? They're going to do up to 25 for the community?
It would be, they would work with us. They would, we would work with them. I mean, they would do it if, because we have, sometimes we have 10 dogs come in and they need it, sometimes we have two. So if we didn't need any, they wouldn't, it would be worth the community, but if they, they would work with us in regards to that also.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was kind of going down that same path, like, because I think when we fund something like this, we have to give, we have to document what the service we're getting back is. Is that correct? And is that still the case?
So in Ms. Oakwood's proposal, she's open to an agreement that would define those deliverables in some manner, what that looks like. That's the conversation kind of before you today with her presentation.
So I'll add this, I do think although we don't go out in the community in spade and neuter, I do think it's a service that some counties offer through their, through their animal services organizations. So I don't think it's, in this case, I don't think it's breaking new ground and setting precedence that doesn't exist elsewhere, if that helps with your concern. Because I think that was where my concern was, and so I researched it, and there is other counties doing this actively. So the other question I had, well, the other thing I just wanted to say is, I think that being proactive, instead of waiting till an animal is in the shelter, I would rather see if we have alternative means, a spade and neuter of the animals we have in the shelter, to utilize this in the community, like, I think is going to be presented. And the reason for that is, I know of at least three different locations where people go pick up dogs on the side of the road because the family just lets their dogs reproduce regularly, and they don't look to sell the dogs, and the one's not far from Larry's house, where the dogs are on the street and the people don't care if people take the puppies or not, and they do feed them and stuff, but it's like, we don't want that anymore. That needs to stop. I mean, that's, that's where our problems come from, right? So I think if we get out to those type neighborhoods and those type individuals who are just allowing their dogs to reproduce because they just don't pay attention, and I don't know if they think it's fun or what the case is, but those are definitely the instances I hope that we pursue with this if it passes. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Oakwood, you have the floor.
Do not laugh.
Well, we're going to laugh, I mean, that's just...
It's my goofy hat, and ARC doesn't goof around. We've been doing adoptions since 2018. We implemented low-cost vouchers for spade and neuter for the community. Also, we have provided emergency vet bills assistance, so if somebody's dog was hit by a car, they didn't have the means to pay for it, ARC stepped in. Our most amazing accomplishment has been the low-cost vaccine clinic. We implemented that in January of this year with two vets, twice a month, and I'm happy to report, as of the end of October, we have vaccinated 500 animals in this community.
Wow.
500. My mother has always told me, regardless, because I did grow up poor, nothing is impossible. Education is the key. And that's another goal that you will see in my presentation. I am a professor at a college level. I taught at St. John's, and I'm currently at the College of Central Florida. So education is crucial, and it starts preschool up. Also in this presentation, I know you're going to ask, what happens if your vet doesn't show up or you lose a contract? We have a Plan A, B, and C. UF, I've reached out to them, and they do have a community outreach where they will bring students to us. Second thing I want to mention is, we, I know that the county has numerous business associates and contracts, and I want to start off with canine neuters start between $300 to $400 per dog, okay? Somebody who goes to the vet. And a cat is 150 to 200 per cat. How can the average individual afford that? So the presentation is improving the lives of animals and the people who love them. As we mentioned, 85% of dog owners and 76 cat owners consider their cats and dogs members of the family. And I want to add to that, an old person has no family. That animal inspires her or him to get up every morning and, and enjoy life. Nationally, 76% of family dogs and 85% of cats are spayed and neutered. According to Florida Animal Friends, one unaltered female can produce 67,000 puppies in six years. In seven years, one cat can produce 370 kittens, and this is a national association. And of course, it's overwhelming, they end up in animal rescues at the animal services, or, as you mentioned, on the side of the road. Breeding seasons for cats in the spring to late autumn, and of course, all that is statistically going up and up in our community. According to the World Animal Foundation, in February 2023, 4,500,000 people become victims of dog bites annually in the United States, and the majority of 70% of these dog bites are dogs that have not been neutered.
Ms. Oakwood, may I interrupt you for, we've had this packet, so if we can get to the, the ask, okay?
I'm glad you said that.
Yeah.
I apologize.
I think you've got board support, so just get to the ask and we'll go from there, okay?
We have an opportunity next year to get a spade and neuter trailer, not an RV. It can be moved by a 350 diesel or pickup truck, which we have a list of volunteers to help us with that. We want it affordable to anybody in this community that would like to spade or neuter their cats or their dogs. Another, give me a second, my notes. Going back to the availability, there's only one vet in town who does spade and neuter at low cost. When we have an animal that needs to be spayed and neuter, we might have to drive to Daytona Beach, Bonnell, Clay, and we've even, after adoptions, have gone to Ocala. So how can somebody who is low income, four dogs, four cats, because they love them, they have the land, can afford this? We want to make that possible. And as you can see, just by our statistics in our low-cost vaccine, it can't happen. So we are proposing that the county provides us with $25,000, like Ms. Young has mentioned. Of course, all this will be a three-year agreement. We will maintain the maintenance on the trailer, as well as any liability, of course, insurance would be ARC. Of course, we can agree and make changes as things change. And of course, we will provide the community, which we already are doing. We have done over 200 spade and neuter vouchers alone this year for cats and dogs. Of course, all this, 25,000, which I'm 99% sure that we're going to get the grant from USDA, and that will be announced next year. We have already submitted a lot of the paperwork and the needs assessment, et cetera.
Ms. Oakwood, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
When is the deadline for this grant that you're trying to apply for?
March of next year.
March of 2024, and you need a letter of intent from the board saying that we either want to do it or whatever, is that what, and that'll meet that $25,000 match to get this trailer? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, good. Are you done with your presentation? I do have a commissioner has a question.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Oakwood, Mr. Adams, Zach.
So these spade and neuters, would they be affordable or free? Because you keep using the word affordable, and when I read the packet, I was under the impression free. So I need to know the answer to that question.
The spade and neuter vouchers, there is a co-pay, and that shows responsibility of the owner. We have waived many, many times, may I finish, please? Free. When somebody has five dogs and they cannot afford $10 or $20 for each dog, we waive the co-pay. Co-pay also puts the position of responsibility to that pet owner. Compared to $20 versus $400, they are very happy to pay the $20.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adams, Zach. Mr. Turner, then Mr. Pickens.
Okay, I, Ms. Jenny, I just need to find out what, you're asking for 25, I need to break this down. I live in San Mateo, we're a little slower than the rest of the world, so what you're asking for today is $25,000 to match a grant if you get the grant. So we are not asking us to give you 25,000 a day, you're asking us to give you the 25,000 if you're successful in getting the grant. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes a big difference on my end, so, because I was really having a hard time getting on board with just giving you $25,000 to do with as you please, but you're not asking that. You're asking us to support your program if you're successful in getting your grant.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Pickens, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you Chairman Harvey. I actually met with Ms. Kelly and Ms. Oakwood a number of months ago, and they presented this program to me. I just want to compare Jenny Oakwood, you know how the pickleball players are passionate about pickleball? Ms. Oakwood is that passionate about helping animals. I did have questions, and we spoke a little yesterday about these, is the sustainability of the project, so if you could address that, and then also, I liked the part that it was mobile, and if you're coming and asking, you're asking this commission, not just Commissioner Pickens, you're asking five commissioners representing five different districts about how it would service all of Putnam County, so if you can address that. Linda Young, who's on the advisory, Animal Advisory Board, we've had a number of conversations about animal control over the years, most of it has been a new facility and then spade and neuter. She said that's the biggest problem that we have throughout the county of people not doing it or not being able to afford to do it. So I just want to make those comments, but if you can address the sustainability, if you were to get the grant, and I also said, if we, if we give the money, we have to justify, because we're giving it to a nonprofit, how it benefits the citizens of Putnam County, we get, like, they were talking about deliverables back to the county, that we don't open ourselves up to every nonprofit in Putnam County coming and asking for donations. So if you could address some of those questions.
First question. As you are aware of my passion, I have a Plan A, B, and C. I already have a committed vet contract. If not, I couldn't even submit, we, excuse me, could not submit the grant. Number two would be UF coming to us, or UF meeting us with the mobile spade and neuter and interlocking, or Hollister. I'm sure SAFE would love us to come over there as well. And affordability is necessary for this county, for the, for our residents. Mobile is, yes, it will be housed at the Crescent City kennel, but that doesn't mean that it is stationary there. The low-cost vaccine is already there. Any animal that's going to be spayed and neutered needs a rabies prior to that surgery, so we already have that, all that in place. Did I answer the first question?
Yes, ma'am.
The second question? Refresh my memory, please.
Really, it was the mobility?
Okay.
Okay, so you answered that. I think that was it, wasn't it? I think that was it.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Adams, Zach.
So from the mobility perspective, I guess, could you just give me a picture of what that looks like? Like, do you, let me just preface with what I visualize, what you're saying, and I might be completely off-base, because I'm just trying to imagine it based on what you provided and what you're saying. So, yeah, I, I know what a trailer is. Thank you. I'm talking about, do you visualize, like, setting up, like you said, SAFE in Hollister, maybe one week a month, and then setting up at your place, because you're in Crescent City already one week a month, and then maybe, I don't know, tractor supply, and what does that look like? Because usually when you get your dog spayed or neutered, or your cat, it's an overnight thing, so does that, so you're, this, these aren't going to be overnight, they're going to be, I, all dogs I had were overnight. Okay, so the person just gets it done, takes the animal with them, okay? So that answers that question. So have you worked to figure out locations in Placa, Bostwick, Bardin? There's, there's a lot more areas than just...
That's right.
West, south, central Putnam.
Like my mother said, nothing is impossible. It can be done. Once a month, even if we had to, we have a vehicle, we can also pick up individuals, cats and dogs, and bring them to our, to a location. I, that's in the plan as well. We already have a vehicle to do that.
And when you do the vaccinations, do you register those animals?
Yes, the, and they have tags.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Oakwood, I'm going to finish up this conversation. I do think that we, I want to see deliverables, and I want to see reports based on that, because I do agree with Commissioner Pickens, we have to be very careful, there's a lot of good programs that serve the people of Putnam County. I wish we weren't in the animal service business, you've heard me say that. I don't mean that flippantly. I, I lost my dog after 18 years of a black lab. Commissioner Wilkland has a beautiful white, brand-new lab named Buddy, and she made a comment yesterday about taking care of him at the level that he deserves to be taken care of.
I have a black lab at ARC.
I wish everybody took care of their animals at the level that they deserve to be taken care of, and I don't think it's government's responsibility to set, step out and do that, but unfortunately, we're in a world that we have to take care of those, and, and that's where we're at right now. But I do want to see deliverables, and I want to see reports based on that. I'm not opposed to, I do think going out in the community is very important, and I believe Mr. Adams, Zach hit the nail on the head. Putnam County is large, very, very large, and when you go from even South Putnam and Georgetown, Willaka area, you know, and Hawthorne and Melrose and just the areas, there's a lot of needs out there, and I would like to see this trailer, if it's successful, be able to go out in those areas and help, okay? So, Mr. Turner, you have the floor.
First off, I'd like to say I appreciate your passion, I truly do. I think it's wonderful that every person that comes before us is passionate about their charity or their nonprofit or what they do, and then there, and if you've noticed, every single person that comes before us, theirs is the one and only most important one, all the others don't matter. So, but I just don't know that I, that I've been able to get there. I think you might, could get me there, but I'm not there today, and of course, I'm just one of five today, but I'm not going to vote for this today, but I might, would vote for it with a little more information as far as exactly when your grant cycle is going to be, and, and do you need a letter from us in order to apply for your grant? Is it necessary? Or can we wait to see if you even get the grant before we do it? I mean, there's just a lot of questions here that I think we're just a little bit ahead of the game, just a little bit on, because I haven't heard any of that answered. I mean, that's the nuts and bolts of the grant, and, and do you, do you actually need a letter from us that says that we're, that we're going to partner with you in order for you to be able to apply for the grant? Because if you don't, then we're months ahead of the game in giving you money now. Oh, you, Ms. Turner, lady there wants to answer, I think.
Ms. Kelly, you'll have to come up and answer the question on the microphone, this is being televised, and if you will, speak directly into the microphone. Thank you, excellent questions. I did, did want to just...
Okay, you got to speak right into the microphone.
So sorry, okay. All right, regarding the letter, here's where we are. This is with the USDA, it is not yet approved. We've had several discussions with them, provide a lot of information to them, it looks very promising. And if it's not the USDA, it will be another organization, okay? So we will wind up getting a grant. We've been successful with many grants, we are going to get a grant for a trailer. So to get to the question regarding, are we maybe a little bit soon? It may, it definitely feels that way. One of the things that I haven't shared yet or included in the presentation is that we are anticipating that we are going to get approval. Normally, when you get grants like this, they want to know, they're going to fund about 75% of the value of the trailer, and we believe it's going to be around $100,000. So the 25,000 that we're asking for is that other 25%. It may be a little more than $100,000. We're going to be also working with Crescent City, Willaka, and others to try to get a few more dollars. We think that the lowest, we had three estimates for the trailer, the lowest estimate, which should meet our needs for mobility, for stationary services, would be about $35,000 of a gap. Now, for the, if the USDA approves this, and if it's not them, it will be somebody else, we're not going to give up on this, it has to be done, then what...
I understand, and like I told Ms. Jenny, I appreciate y'all's passion.
I know you do.
I really do, but I think we're early.
Can I get to your question, though? It might not be early. We think what's going to happen, because this normally happens with these grants, I've written many of them, I've worked with many of these companies, they will say, if we give you the 75,000, you have to prove to us that you have a mechanism to fill the gap, otherwise they're not going to give us the money. So we want to try to be proactive and see if we can perhaps get conditional approval in the event, to your point, Mr. Turner, earlier, if we can get approval for this grant, can Putnam County, and hopefully some others, chip in to cover the variance? That's what we're looking for. We're trying to be proactive so that it makes it easier and more fluid for us to get the grant approval.
But if I was a citizen watching this at home on TV today, I would say, I would say, I appreciate y'all's passion, but you haven't even applied for it yet, you don't know if you're going to get it yet, you don't know if USDA is going to give you the money or not, you don't know if you're going to have to go to somebody else, you're not, all these non-variables, but you're asking for $25,000 commitment from the county before you even know what's going on yet.
Well, that's a good point. Maybe what, maybe we should couch it, or maybe we should have clarified that it's really more conditional approval, and we don't want to check right now, we're not asking for that, but we need to know that we can fill the gap, otherwise we may risk losing the funding. That's what we're trying, we're trying to be proactive, prepared...
You're just looking for the commitment.
There you go. That's, yes, I'm sorry, we probably didn't couch it appropriately, and can I just get to a couple other comments that you raised?
Ms. Kelly, we're going to hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Adams, that real quick.
You don't have to leave.
No, you'd say what?
Yeah, I would stay there. So I'm prepared to make a motion today if we have some criteria around it... So I'm prepared to make a motion today if we have some criteria around it. And that would be, to me, I would think we would have to document that you do, and I can't get there if people are paying for him for this particular trailer. So if we could do 80 spay or neuters per quarter as our requirements for, however we write it up from staff, between you guys, between now and when you get or don't get the thing. But I would want to have the requirement be 80 spay or neuters per quarter documented by you guys back to us that are free. I could get there today.
Is this for the three-year agreement, for the three years?
Right, right.
Mr. Pickens, you have the floor?
Yeah, in my conversation with Jenny yesterday, I told her, I said, Jenny, this thing may not move forward. I don't know that it has to move forward today. You'd like to. But if you were in that big a hurry, you would have been in front of us a month or so ago, right? And I'm not trying to be smart. I appreciate Commissioner Turner's concern. I have those same concerns, and we've had those conversations. I'm not so sure that we don't need to slow this down. We've got another meeting in December.
That's right.
And get with, get Commissioner comments about, to, whatever your name is today, Brian, about what we feel needs to be in this. So we feel comfortable that we don't have a problem explaining to the citizens that really don't have a dog and don't care of why we spent that much money to get this program going, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Ms. Wilkinson?
In the proposed three-year agreement, I see, you know, the seven bullet points that within six months, we would jointly reevaluate the agreement. Putnam County would be responsible for drafting the agreement. These are all things that I like, certainly talking about the amount of animals served. I like Commissioner Adams' comment about 80 per quarter. I think that's reasonable. But I am supportive of this, but I do think that we need to, and I do understand your timeline. It's like, well, if you do it in December, if you do it in January, when do you do it? But I'm on this side with Commissioner Pickens as we might just need to get some more of these boxes checked and then come back.
Like I mentioned, we are already doing spay and neuter.
Yes, ma'am. And I know, and we need to continue to do that. And I don't disagree, and this is a service to the entire community.
And that way, when a new shelter is open, the puppies and kittens don't go there.
Yeah, we get that.
Yes, ma'am.
My, I agree. I'm going to say this, and we're going to close this down in just a second. But I think you need to get with Mr. Helms and work out an agreement and bring it back to us, maybe in December. Something that we can really look at. And with numbers, I mentioned that to you yesterday, deliverables and reports. I just need to be able to justify to the taxpayers of why we're spending their money on something like this. And if we can avoid, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, we can avoid them going to the shelter in the first place. We save money. We do. But we got to make that deliverable. Mr. Adams, that closing comment?
The one thing I want to say in reference to, as far as non-dog owners go, the biggest complainers that I get about loose dogs and things like that are from people that don't own dogs. So I mean, I just do want to say that out loud. So I think a lot of the non-dog owners would be some of the advocates for this. And my, from the experience I have with the citizens that I talk to about it. I'm for waiting. I mean, I would love to see that requirements come back from you guys, saying that you think you could do 80 dogs a quarter. I think there needs to be requirements, and I think it needs to be free. That's the only way I get there. So I'm just saying that out loud now. So when you write those requirements, come up with whatever you have, that's the only way it gets my vote. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
One thing that would really help me a lot with this is if you actually had your nuts and bolts in place. You knew who you were going to try to get the grant from. They had actually acted like they wanted to give you the money. And we're not giving money just in case you get other money. That's, I'm having a big issue with that.
All right, good. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion that we table this item and come back in, do we want to come back in December or January? If we came back in January, would that give you enough time to still be able to apply for the grant? What's your timeline on that? January would be good?
It depends what information you want. I'm not clear on that right now.
I think Mr. Helms will be able to help with that. I mean, we can go back and review some of our comments, but I think, Mr. Helms, what we're looking for, a little bit more unknown agreement, a proposed agreement versus what we have now. I think you have the support as far as we like the idea and we like what you're doing. We just got to get down to some of the, a little bit more details. And I think Mr. Helms will be able to help you with that. So I'd like to table this.
I'd be happy to second her tableed motion.
Do we have proper motion, proper second?
But I don't think it's necessary. I think she can just withdraw it and bring it back in January, or whatever point she feels good, and Brian can put it back on the agenda. Instead of giving it a time certain, we don't have to do that. So that way, if she's not ready in January, she can ask Brian to put it back on in February if she's not ready in January, or whatever.
Will you withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Yes, I'll withdraw the motion.
And I'll withdraw the second.
She gets the idea.
All right, good. Mr. Adams, that?
I just want to clarify one thing from what I said. As far as the free, it would only be those those numbers, the 80 per quarter, that are done via the trailer. That doesn't apply to your rest of your business, what you're doing, as far as what you charge for it. I just want to be clear on that. That, so I didn't want to come across like, oh, you should do everything for free, because that's not the case.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation.
One more comment? Ms. Jenny? As you said yesterday, you wanted to plant a seed, so you have done that. So we just get some more information, and we'll see how this moves forward. Thank you for all your efforts, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you what you do for the animals of Putnam County. We really appreciate that. Next item, Commissioner Pickens, Ride Solutions?
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. As Chair of Ride Solutions, at our last meeting, we had to make some tough decisions. And you've seen it in your packet in the letter that was written by Boyd Thompson, the Executive Director, on some route closures that we have to implement. And we felt as a board that it would be respectful to the Board of County Commissioners for Boyd to come and give just a little talk about how this happened, and then how we'll move forward. And also, Board Member Wayne McLean, I'm going to invite them up to the podium, where he'll make some comments also.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Thompson, please come forward.
We wanted to inform the county commission that effective December 1st, we would be closing our in-county flex routes, which have been running for over 30 years now. That includes the Placa City Route, which started in 1988, and the cross-county express routes that run from Satsuma to Interlochen and return, and the South Putnam feeder route, which serves Crescent City, Willacca, Georgetown. Reason for this is basically Medicaid reform in 2019, after five years of working with the Medicaid transportation brokers that were the result of Medicaid reform. We got out of Medicaid transportation, that was about $450,000 a year in revenue. We determined at that time that we would be able to sustain the routes without Medicaid. What we didn't count on was that in '20 and '21, ARC removed about 30,000 trips a year, or 300, an additional 300,000 in revenue. So a total loss of about $750,000 in 2019, $20, $20. That occurred at the beginning of COVID. And the COVID funding came in at 100%, basically covered those losses through the COVID years. But now we are in the process of moving back to the normal 50% FDOT funding grants. And that basically uncovers the losses that we sustained under Medicaid and MedWaiver in 19 and 20. The in-county service will be replaced with a dial ride type van pool, or not van pool, van service by reservation only. There'll no longer be the ability to board the vehicle at a bus stop. That van service is going to prioritize medical trips, and we will be running a waiting list for shopping trips. So that when we have space available on the vehicles, we can call up somebody that wanted to go shopping, get them shopping. The service out in the county is going to run to a schedule so that we have the best chance of multi-loading people. We're still in the process of producing that schedule. The routes that will continue to run will be the out-of-county routes to Gainesville, St. Augustine, and Jacksonville, as well as our reverse commute route from Orange Park to Placa. And the reason those are continuing is those are funded by 100% FDOT grants. Just a terrible thing for Putnam County. Last year, Ride Solutions served over 2,000 unduplicated passengers with an average trip count of over 30 trips each in this last year. We anticipate the closure of the routes may affect half of our total rides. Last year, we did 63,000 trips. We expect up to half of those to be, you know, in danger this coming year. So we have hopes that in the coming legislative session, Representative Payne has this, he does have this on his radar. He is looking for a legislative solution to this. Over a third of the county, of the rural counties in Florida have had their community transportation coordinators, which is what Ride Solution is, go out of business since the rollout of Medicaid reform in 2014. Those were replaced by for-profit CTCs typically. So the fact that Medicaid reform had a negative impact on rural transit in Florida is well-known. We're hoping this next session will provide some relief to the rural CTCs in Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Wayne, would you come up and make a few comments? And another reason is, I know the commissioner's going to have calls about the service, because I've already had a couple. So at least you'll be able to explain basically what is going to happen. So Wayne?
Yeah, Wayne McLean, 285 West River Road. Been a board member of Ride Solution for some time. This is a problem that has hit all the counties in the state of Florida. Unfortunately, it hits rural counties the hardest. We have been working with the legislature, and we'll keep working with them to try to come up with funding. This is at a terrible time, because you take, with Winn-Dixie cutting out their pharmacy in South Putnam, it's going to hit those folks very hard. And Boyd has that in mind when we look at alternative ways to get those people here. So you're going, as commissioners, I'm sure you're going to start getting calls from citizens. I guess my point from a board member, we're aware of this, we're working on it. Again, it hit our county as hard as any small rural county in the state of Florida. So with that, I'll take some questions.
Any questions or comments?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Mr. Adams, that, you have the floor?
I'll just say this, as the chairman of the disadvantaged transportation committee, I'm slightly, I mean, obviously, what happened, happened. We were taken aback by it as a committee, though, because we literally, I came in for our meeting on the 20th of November with the expectation of having our normal updates and things like that. And this was in my mailbox out here from the Friday before. Obviously, you guys had to act in a way that was, because emergency basis, you were running out of funds for that area, is my understanding. I hope and pray that the legislature can do something. I have a call in to Mr. Payne prior to today, after our meeting. We just have not hooked up yet to discuss this. So I'm hopeful that we can, something comes out of that. There is a lot of riders. I took the opportunity, basically, two years in a row to ride the bus, because I had some people from the community that said, oh, well, the bus isn't up to spec. So I found it to be adequate, and it's the way we've talked about it in the committee. I want to commend Boyd, as I did in our meeting on the 20th. I called him basically, he's a yeoman in every way as far as this goes in trying to get this established and working for those people that need transportation. The timing of this couldn't be worse with the holidays. Like you said, with the closing of the pharmacy in South Putnam. I don't know how the riders, I have not gotten calls from my district ever about ridership in the whole time I've been on this commission. Maybe I'll get the first ones ever now. I do know of people that use it. You know, we just appointed a citizen advocate, literally, for the first time in the three years, we finally found one. And now that what she utilizes isn't going to be there. So that's kind of sad. But I just want to put that out there. Boyd, you did a great job with everything, and hopefully, we can continue it, and hopefully, the legislature comes through. And I'll continue to work. And if, as I said in that meeting, if there's buttons you need me to push as a commissioner or the commission, I can't speak for the rest of them. I will make whatever calls you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment, Boyd. Thank you for everything you do. I know this is hard to make these announcements, especially at this time of the year. But you know, throughout the year, the amount of people that use this service is that it's just not going to be there. So hopefully, with a little pressure on the legislators and Bobby's help, that maybe we can get some funding and bring those routes back soon. So, thank you, Wayne. Thank you, Boyd.
Thank you. Commissioners, we're going to try to go right through, and let's, I think we can finish this up in a reasonable time. Commissioner Turner, discussion about commission members on the value adjustment?
Phil Short and Sweet, Value Adjustment Board. Normally, you, the chairman and the vice chairman, that just changed today. Do you want to change it? We voted back in July or August to change it, to make it the chair and the vice chair, but now that's changed. So do y'all want to change it to chair and vice chair in the way we've done it in past years?
It's
It don't bother me, you're not going to upset me.
Oh, okay, you wouldn't be the chair.
And you've got, we've got a meeting coming up on the 11th of December.
11th of December. But I think that's enough time for Commissioner Wilkinson to get on board. I mean, I'm not being
No, I get it, I get it.
Get on board and find out what's going on, and she can talk to Tim Parker, or she can talk to our attorneys with the Value Adjustment Board and find out. I don't think there's any long, hard, educational things that she's got to go through. It's just ask her some questions and go through a meeting. Julie Suggs is still on the committee. She was on it first time, Julie Masters, excuse me, where she doesn't shoot me. But anyhow, she was on last year, and for her first time, and she did well with just a little advanced timing before we put her on there. So, you know, I don't mind. I'm just saying that historically, we've tried to make it chair and vice chair on the Value Adjustment Board.
And the reason being is, we haven't met yet. Usually, we've already met and got done. But in this case, we're
I think Sarah Herbine is the one that's taking care of this. And she has gotten so damn good at it that she's getting us ahead of the game. Where in past years, it's kind of been in December, we do this for the next year's meetings in December and January, or whatever. This year, she had us ahead of the game, because she's getting, she's good at it. And so I And so I think that's what happened this year. She just got us a little further ahead than what we've been in previous years. So my suggestion would be that we change it with the new Board Chair and Vice Chair because it gives the.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm okay with that.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, the ayes have it. Supervisor Election Canvassing Board. Mr. Overturf has been sitting patiently on those hard chairs out there. What's your ask, Mr. Overturf?
I'm sorry?
What's the ask?
Well, it's state statute that there has to be one of the county commissioners on the canvassing board. We also need an alternate, so that's why I wanted to approach you all today. Next year's going to be extremely busy. I will tell you already, whoever wants to do it, we've already got between 25 and 30 meetings already scheduled. I don't know, it's been a long time since I've been up here to see that unless one of the three changes their mind, we're going to have three new members after August or November next year of the five. And I don't, I can't remember that happening. A lot of times, we had people that were running for reelection, but this, unless, like I said, some of you change their mind, it's going to be three brand-new members to do that. We have to have, as I said, one of the members as far as the canvassing board, usually the statute, if Rich was here, he would say it's usually the Chairman, but again, the Chairman has a right to say, I'm going to be involved in campaigns, I'm going to be raising money, I'm going to endorse somebody, and that, of course, any of those situations causes them to be eliminated. So I'm here today to try to ask you all to discuss this and maybe give me a reason who you want to take care of that as far as from the commission is concerned. Our first meeting is January the 9th, so we're really close, and I don't want to scare anybody off, but I will tell you this, the state has gotten away with us not having to go to Orlando for the conference, but you, whoever joins us will have four hours of online of canvassing board information, and then two more hours of signature training because that is, of course, what we will deal with. So that's why I told them I can't be here at the next meeting, I'll be in the conference, and that's why I told them that if we could today to let you all discuss this so that, because, you know, whoever it is, we want to make sure that you've got time to mark out your calendar because, like I said, it'll be between 25 and 30 meetings that are already planned.
Well, we know we have two Commissioners that are not running again, and that would be a great parting gift for them, for one of them to step up and do that.
Unfortunately, it would be definitely a conflict of interest for me. I have a family member running for office.
And I'll just go ahead and say that I served on the canvass board last year, and it is time-consuming, but it was a really good experience, working with Charles Staff, going to Orlando, I didn't like it. It was a good conference, and we learned a lot. And I can actually say that the signature online class that I took was the most boring thing I've ever done in my entire life. But anyway, I got through it, but I'm going to be involved in a campaign, so I can't, I can't sign up for this year, so.
Well, it sounds like that's two people left.
Two people left.
Well, go ahead.
Well, do you want to do it, Commissioner Wilkinson, Commissioner Harvey?
I would prefer to be the alternate, but we'll hear what Mr. Harvey has to say. Chair Harvey.
Mr. Overturf, I'll ask a question publicly, I wasn't ready to answer that, I mean, to divulge it yet, but I'm the President of a Political Action Committee that is intending to raise money to help local candidates. So does that exclude me from doing that?
I'm glad the attorney came back in, but to me, it would because that is raising money, and that's one of the criteria that they don't want on the canvassing board, is somebody that, oh, I see that Terry has raised a whole mess of money for Paul, you know, that kind of thing.
I get it.
So I would lean that it probably would eliminate you.
Well, the cat's out of the bag now, so.
So you remember that commercial, Give It To Mikey? Yeah, I think I'm Mikey today.
Mikey'll do it.
Mikey'll do it. I sounds like I'm Mikey today.
He'd love to have you.
So I guess tag him in, Mikey, nickname me Mikey.
I didn't think you were old enough to remember that commercial.
Oh, yeah.
So who would be the alternate, though? That could be a private citizen, or?
It could be, yeah. Again, they would rather it be a Commissioner, but if we had nobody left.
But if we don't have one available, then we've got, do we need an alternate right now, or can we wait? Maybe?
Again, the alternate is going to have to go through the four hours and the two hours and stuff like that. I'm not saying you've got to have it done by the first meeting in January, but soon after that, it needs to, and, you know, we got holidays coming up, and I don't want to.
Mr. Overturf, I saw Mr. Suggs pointing his finger at himself.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to be the alternate, or is that what I'm hearing?
I've had some experience on sitting on the canvassing boards before, my previous city manager's position, so if the Board needs an alternate, I'll absolutely.
There you go.
Work with Commissioner Wilkinson.
There you go.
I would like, it was a little strong, but I would love to work with Commissioner Wilkinson.
Thank you, thank you for your.
Love is a strong word.
Okay, so, so right now, we have Commissioner Wilkinson would be the primary, and Mr. Suggs would be the alternate.
And just so you'll be aware.
Also known as Mikey. We'll do it.
Judge Morris is contacting the Chief Judge. She's already appointed Judge Morris as the Chairman, but she did not give us an alternate, and it does state we have to have two. So with us having Mr. Suggs, and hopefully, the judge will get a second one, then we'll have met the qualifications. And I will make sure that you all get the dates and the links to where you can go at your leisure and watch the six hours of stuff.
Four.
Four and two.
Four plus two equals six. I mean, we are government.
They added two just for you.
And Mr., Commissioner Pickens is exactly right. I've already looked at them, and it has not changed. It's still as boring as all get out, but we have to do it to meet the requirements in case we had to go to court or whatever.
Mr. Commander, does this need a motion?
It does.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that Commissioner Wilkinson be the, on the canvassing board with administrative Suggs being the alternate.
May a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, the ayes have it.
Listen, I almost opposed it.
No, you didn't, Mike. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, let's go. Thomas, let's get, move quickly on the codes enforcement. We've learned how to do that pretty quick, so.
Mr. Chairman, not to cut him off by any means whatsoever, could you just ask if there's anybody here for public comment on the three cases? I'm ready to make a motion.
On case number 2000-00134, is there anyone in the public want to speak about that? On case number 2020-00685, is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of that one? So we'll take the, so that's the second one? Is that right? Dorothy Gilbert wants to speak about codes case. Which one? Ms. Gilbert, do you know which one you want to speak about?
Yes, or it is his case.
It's not his cases? Okay. And on 2021-00146, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor or against that? Okay, Mr. Turner, go right ahead. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, with regards to case number 02, let's see, 2009-00134, get on the right page, I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay, sir.
134, I move the, that we settle for a cost of $1,239 to be paid within 90 days.
Second.
May a proper motion, may a proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to 2021, oh, I missed, 685 somewhere, 20.
2020-00685.
Yeah, 685, yeah, I got it here. 2020-00685, I move that we settle it for $1,668, have paid within 90 days.
Second.
May a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, the ayes have it.
And Mr. Chairman, in regards to 2021-00146, I move that we settle it for $1,800, have paid within 90 days.
Second.
Proper motion, double seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you, Thomas, appreciate your help. I'm going to go to appointment, oh, Ms. Gilbert, you want to, we'll do that as soon as we get the public comment on miscellaneous. So give us just a moment. Appointments, we're going to go in District Order, Commissioner One, Commissioner District One.
Yeah, I'd like to renominate an at-large position, Chase Barnes, for the Affordable Housing Committee.
I'd like discussion on that.
Okay. Any more, any other appointments?
Does that nomination need a second?
No.
Mr. Pickens, you have any other appointments you'd like to make?
Uh, yes.
That would have to be voted on.
This one has to be voted on.
Yeah.
Can we discuss?
We can discuss that right now.
Okay, so Commissioner Pickens, I would have liked to move Chase Barnes into my district, District Two, because he is in my district, and then replace our at-large with Ben Bates. And so we would fill both of those positions, so District Two would replace. Ms. Wallace does not want to serve again.
Okay.
So we could replace District Two with Chase Barnes.
I have no problem with that, but I just wanted to make sure Chase Barnes stays because he's the Vice Chair.
He would still say, he would just be representing my district.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to appoint him, and he's gotten, he's got a couple of years' experience as he's getting involved, so he's a valuable asset, so I have no problem with that.
So Mr. Pickens, would you appoint Ben Bates at an at-large on that?
I'll, you've talked to him?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll appoint Mr. Ben Bates to the at-large position for the Affordable Housing Committee.
Mr. Chairman, that would have to be a nomination. It's an at-large, it has to be voted on.
Do we have a second for Mr. Ben Bates?
Second.
Any further discussion on them?
I don't think a second's necessary.
I don't think you have to have a second.
Nominations, it's just that it has to be voted on because it's at-large.
All in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Mr. Pickens, any more appointments?
Yeah, for District One Animal Advisory Committee, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Linda Young.
Okay.
And that's a district appointment.
That's right.
That's all I have.
All right. District Two?
For Animal Advisory Committee, I would like to reappoint Robert Thomas for District Two. And I'd also like to have discussion, Robert DeFranco, who is an at-large member, and he has missed three out of the last four animal advisory meetings, and I'd like to remove him and replace him with a new at-large appointment of Katie Lee. Katie Lee is an experienced ag teacher. She grew up on a farm, and she has working animals, and I think she would bring a new perspective to that Board, and so I would, his term ends in March anyway, and so, like I said, he's missed the last three out of four, and I feel like we need to make sure somebody is in that seat, especially since he was serving as Chairman, and so I'd like to remove him and appoint somebody else, Ms. Katie Lee.
All right, let's get back to that. You really need to appoint Chase Barnes first to your Affordable Housing.
Okay, thank you. Affordable Housing, District Two, Chase Barnes.
Okay, thank you.
District Two Animal Service, Robert Thomas.
Okay. And then at-large, does anybody have a problem with Commissioner Wilkinson's request? I don't, so seeing none, do we need a motion? Yes.
I think we get, by motion, we have to remove somebody by motion, correct?
No, his term expires in March.
So you're just going to replace Katie Lee beginning April?
I thought there was something where if they miss three, they're out. Didn't we change that, the rules somewhere?
I have to go back and look, but I thought it says that the Board can remove by majority vote.
Okay.
So that's what I'm proposing.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Proper motion.
How will he be notified?
We will, we will draft a letter and notify via letter, and we can also make a phone call if some.
Okay, because he's having some help, he's battling some health problems, does he call in at all that he's not going to make the meeting, or just?
I don't know.
It's been varied, and the last meeting we had, he confirmed he was coming and then no-showed, and we didn't hear from him, so we are not getting a lot of communication from him.
Okay. I'm good.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? The ayes have it. Ms. Wilkinson, anymore?
Yes, on Parks and Rec, Lindsay Landberg is up for term expiration on December 31st for an at-large position, and I would like to replace her with George Robinson. George Robinson is from Putnam County. He is very involved in Parks and Rec and has been to a couple presentations at the Board.
Mr. Adams, you have the floor.
Yeah, I guess my question is, I think, from my understanding, even from what the Chairman of that committee has stated, that Lindsay's been a beneficial participant in that, and I don't see a reason to remove her. Does she, is she, she sent us a note saying she's interested in continuing. I don't see why we would remove someone who's already serving and doing a good job for all intents and purposes.
Then why do we have term limits? And why do we have term expirations?
All right. Mr. Turner?
Okay, I don't believe we're removing her. This term would start after this, her term ends.
Correct, yes, that's correct. It would, she would term out, and then.
1231, yes.
That's correct.
So we're not removing her from anything, just not being reappointed for the next year, so.
So we need a, Commissioner Wilkinson has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I don't think you need a second. I don't believe, you just need a.
Need a vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign?
Aye.
It's four to one. Commissioner Wilkinson, you still have the floor.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, District Three?
Wait, so did we, I don't know that we ever had a vote on Mr. Bates.
No, Katie Lee.
Oh, Katie Lee, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Are we straight? Yeah, no, Katie Lee for the at-large on animal services. It's been motioned by Commissioner Wilkinson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? The ayes have it on that one. Thank you. Okay, so District Three?
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Greg Bacon to the Tourist Development Council at the end of his term.
Okay, that's proper motion, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? The ayes have it. Thank you.
I would also like to nominate John Hodge as the Tourist Development Council.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? The ayes have it.
Okay, and that's all I have for today.
And I have none for today. Mr. Adams, do you have any?
What I would like to ask for is for a list of my, because I haven't gotten it in a while, we were getting it every month for a while, the attendance of the District Five appointees. So if I get that, that'd be great for, before the next meeting. But I am prepared to nominate Kathy Eadie for District Five Animal Services Advisory Committee. The rest, I'll wait till I have that.
Is that it? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I missed one.
That's fine. We'll go back. Do you, Mr. Turner?
On the Putnam County Library Board, we had someone that I believe Darryl Whitty resigned. It's not on the list, but I think she's resigned. Okay, could you check and make sure she's resigned, and if she has, I want to replace her with a lady named Carol Ellis.
We can do that at the next meeting? Would that be appropriate?
Yes, if you could just check on that, and then if, and then you maybe could get ahold of Ms. Ellis and get a, an application from her between now and the next meeting, perhaps, and I'll appoint her then.
Okay.
Laura, nod your head or something. Okay, thank you.
She's got it, that's all. All right, good. There are no more appointments. We'll move on to public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow the citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It's not reasonable. matters to the attention of the board, it's not reasonable, expect the board will engage in debate and deliberation about the matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes, public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room, and on the side back there and given to our deputy clerk, Ashley, who sits to my left and the right of the podium. Do we have any, we have two speaker cards?
It's in the comments.
Okay, yeah, let's do, Ms. Gilbert, you've been very patient, so if you'll come up and speak about a Code's case that you'd like to talk about?
Once you get going, you're good, right?
And Ms. Gilbert, if you'll bring the microphone right to your mouth, please, it'll move down, there you go.
Like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me better?
You're fine, go ahead and state your name and address for the...
I'm not here for myself, I'm here for Earl Jackson, and it was, I got this letter, and he's in Indiana, and he asked me, y'all's gonna reduce his fine, I guess you call it, and he asked me would I mind coming in here and just checking with y'all?
Is that the one we just did, Thomas? We already reduced his fine.
I have the letter, if you...
We reduced his fine just a few minutes ago.
Oh, you did, we did?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that's all I needed.
Thank you very much for attending.
Okay, and I'll be paying it, so do I...
Get with Thomas right there, wait, Thomas, he'll get with him.
Okay, but it'll be all right to pay it tomorrow.
Be fine, within 90 days.
Oh, yeah.
But tomorrow's a really good day to pay it.
Yes, it is.
Yes, ma'am.
You're a good neighbor, thank you.
That's right, thank you. Brent Bachtler, I messed that up big time.
They bashed it out.
I'm sure you'll clean it up, sir.
Yeah, it's a mouthful. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Brent Batchelder, I am a land resources planner at the St. John's River Water Management District, right here in Palacka at 4049 Reed Street, and today I am before you to announce a public hearing for the 2024 update to the Rice Creek Conservation Area Land Management Plan, Rice Creek's conservation area here in Putnam County. This public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 5th, at 9:00 a.m. at the district's headquarters. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on the district's land management plan update for the Rice Creek Conservation Area. The land management plan establishes goals and objectives for managing this important conservation area over the next 10 years. Information received by the district through hearing, through the hearing, will be used to further refine and improve the update to the management plan. The public hearing will be hosted by the Rice Creek Conservation Area Management Advisory Group, and the management advisory group would like to invite review and comment on the draft land management plan from Putnam County leaders and residents. Public hearing participants will be given time to provide oral comments regarding the draft land management plan, and written comments may also be submitted either at the meeting or prior to the meeting through mail or electronic mail. A copy of the draft land management plan is currently available for review, and additional details regarding the public hearing, including instructions on how to access the draft land management plan, are available through the district's website under the Meetings and Announcements tab. The district invites the county to participate in this meeting and help us guide the management of this valuable natural resource. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, we'll see you on the 5th of December then.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, all right. Any further public comments? We're gonna close that section and go to the clerk of the court, Mr. Matt Reynolds, or his representatives have anything to say? Both of them are shaking their head, no, good, all right. County attorney, Mr. Rich Commando.
Nothing, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, sir. County administrator, Mr. Suggs.
Just one, Mr. Chairman, just a brief update from our trip, unless you're gonna, you're already gonna talk about the...
No, you go right ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna talk about the trip we took down to Tampa for the legislative meeting for fact, and it was actually a really good meeting this time, and had a lot of good conversations.
This time?
This time.
This time?
Good time, absolutely. The manager's class was enlightening, and so many other classes that we sat through as well, so it was a good trip, just wanted to say again, I think it was a worthy trip, and thank Commissioner Turner now, not Chairman Turner now, that he handled that well this morning, so I appreciate it, but it was a good trip, and we did learn a lot down there, and I appreciate the invite.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Okay, starting with Mr. Pickens, Commissioner comments?
Okay, thank you, Chairman Harvey, I'd like to congratulate you on getting appointed chair for the next year, I know you'll do a great job, this is your third time that you've been chairman since I've been here, and...
I might get it right, this...
You are a statesman and a gentleman.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Wilkinson, congratulations on being vice chair, and also the canvassing board, it'll be an experience you'll never forget.
I'm sure.
But it is, it is very interesting how the process goes, but it is a lot of meetings, a lot of them are fairly short, but you'll enjoy that. Past Chairman Turner, I just want to thank you for your service to this community, to the county, and your leadership as chair last year. Each year is different, we have different challenges, whether it's the budget, hurricanes, different things that we have to deal with, but your leadership was, it was straight, straightforward, and that's one thing I like about you, and I just want to thank you and enjoy serving with you. I was not able to attend the Palacka Christmas Parade on Friday, because I went, my wife and I went to the lighting of Eva Lyons Park in Crescent City, and if you haven't been through Crescent City at night, you need to do that, because the Downtown Partnership, along with Mayor Myers and Administrator, County City Administrator Charles Rudd, did a great job with volunteers of lighting the trees in the park, the mediums, the grass in the mediums are lighted, and some of the trees are also lighted, and they also purchased a new Christmas tree, it has to be at least 30 feet tall.
Wow.
But it was really a good ceremony, they had hot chocolate, and they had some Christmas carols that a family of five actually played instruments and sang, and there was really probably 250 people there, so it was a really good event. This Saturday, the city of Crescent City is having their Christmas parade, there is an era, it is at 1:00 rather than 12:00, lineup will be around 12, which will be the South State Bank, so I will be there, so I just need to know of any of the administration or county commissioners that want to ride in that parade, so if you'll just get with me, and I think that is it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens, Mr. Adamsak?
I have nothing to do.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to congratulate you and Commissioner Wilkinson on chair and vice chair, thank you for taking it, and I'm sure y'all do a wonderful job.
Thank you, sir.
I did ride in the Christmas parade Friday evening, I had the pleasure of riding with Leota's grandchildren, and it was great, you know, she was all upset and what have you, like grandmothers get, but I loved every second of it, so I enjoyed it, threw a lot of candy and saw a lot of kids, my goodness, I think there's more children out there every single year. I don't know how many thousands there were, but there were a lot of children, which made me happy, throwing candy to the little kids, you know, so anyhow, but that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Commissioner Turner, thank you for supplying your vehicle, it was certainly a fun night for the, for the Palacka Parade, and I want to thank everybody who volunteered and put that parade on, it's very important to our community, and it's well attended, as you said, there's thousands and thousands of people. Also, I want to mention animal services, two pet adoptions coming up, one on December 12th, the Porch Fest in Palacka, and one on December 16th is the Tractor Supply, and I also want to thank animal services for, in October, they were able to rescue 38, they rescued out, meant they went to rescue agencies, 38 pets, along with 30 adoptions that we had, so we were able to move 68 dogs out of the kennel, kennels in Putnam County in October, so thank you to staff for doing that and their continued service to the, to the pet population, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I did forget, there's some additions to the parade, during that day, I think starting at 11:00, there'll be a street market on Central Avenue, which runs from the traffic from lake to lake, and then in the evening at dusk, the Crescent City Yacht Club is gonna have fireworks also.
Wow.
So it should be a good day.
Good, thank you. Ms. Young, JR, you had a comment you needed to make before I close?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, just to keep the community aware that cold weather's coming the next two nights, emergency management is working with Ms. Sheila McCoy from the Christian Service Center, and they're gonna coordinate opening up a cold weather shelter for tomorrow night, because it's supposed, or tonight, it's supposed to be very, very cold, so I just want to let everybody know that there is some efforts going in place to open that up, and we've offered them the Red Cross assistance as well for the shelter.
Thank you for that announcement.
Can I add to that?
Yes, you may.
So that would be at Westminster Hall, which is the first Presbyterian church downtown Palacka.
Okay, they haven't, they haven't made an announcement which one they were opening, they were working with the Ministerial Association around Palacka to figure out which one they were going to open, but...
Oh, okay.
We'll definitely, I know it's real hard, but it'll be out on our social media pages, so if you do get requests or asks, we can definitely direct them to emergency management.
Okay, thank you.
Good, and my comments are very simple, do want to thank our chairman, Chairman Turner, our prior chairman, he has done a remarkable job last year, and it's, it's not hard to follow a good leader, and I appreciate your leadership on that. I thank you, all my board members for electing me as chairman, I'll try to live up to that, there's big shoes to fill, and, and Commissioner Wilkinson, congratulations on being the vice chair. The Palacka Parade was really well attended, Stuart Rotahever, Brigadier General, retired, came down from Eatonton, Georgia, Mr. Suggs and I met him up there when we did the get out to vote rally a few years back, and lost that barbecue contest, but it was rigged, it was rigged, it was, the voting was not right, no, but we had a good time up there, and never did think I would see the day that one of our cookers would freeze up, but it froze up, and it wouldn't work until it thawed out, so, but that's how we met Stuart, and he came down, Mr. Rotahever, and he will be back in the community soon to do something with the Boys Ranch. This coming Saturday in Anilacan is the annual Christmas celebration, starting at 4:00, and we will have a lighted Christmas parade at 6:15, but it's a big time in the town of Anilacan down by the Caboose, so please be there. Salvation Army bell ringers are looking for volunteers, so if, I know, I think Commissioner